Thank you. Good afternoon and evening, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the clerk. Please call the roll to establish your call.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ashby.
Here, thanks.
I expect Councilmember Loloey momentarily. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
Mayor Steinberg.
I'm here.
And Councilmember Loloey just joined us.
Here.
Do we have all the members present now, Madam Clerk?
I'm looking for Councilmember Harris, but I know he was online a moment ago. We'll find him.
He'll get on there in a second. All right, thank you, members. If everyone can please rise, I'd like to ask my senior staff leader, Julia Burrows, who's written in the office here, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. There you go. Come on.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right on. Thank you, Julia.
And Councilmember Harris is also online.
Very good. Members, tonight, we present and vote upon the city's 2021 Master Sighting Plan to address homelessness. This has been a seven-month effort, and I have many thank yous before we get into the overall presentation. But before I say thank you, I'd ask Madam Clerk if she could please to put up Slides 1 and 2, really Slide 2, so that I can address my colleagues and the public in terms of the proposed order of business here tonight. If we can put up Slide 2, please. The next one, please. Very good. So, members, this is a, really a five-part presentation tonight, and it is intentional, and obviously the main item is to hear and hopefully approve the Master Sighting Plan and the accompanying resolution, and I will walk us through all of that, hopefully briefly. But I want to start out a little bit differently. We all want to begin the presentation with a very impressive presentation by ULI and AIA regarding design. And this is first in terms of our items tonight, because I think it is vitally important that the public see that when we are talking about safe ground, we are talking about quality. We are talking about safety. We are talking about dignity. And shelters and tiny home villages and safe grounds that will be of benefit to our entire city and the neighborhoods where they are located. We will then move on to discussing a key part of the eventual resolution, and that is the Good Neighbor Policies. Vice Mayor Chenier, who has just negotiated Good Neighbor Policy at the WX Freeway, will help lead that presentation. And we will inform the public again that this is what we intend as a part of every facility that we locate. I will then give a brief overview without a vote tonight on the potential funding framework, for we have more money now than we ever have before. We will then get to the main event, the Master Siting Plan and Resolution, and then after the vote, assuming it passes, we will hear briefly from the city manager on implementation. And as the manager said at the afternoon meeting, he will make a fuller presentation at next Tuesday's council meeting. So that is the intended order here today. I'd like to go through all five of these. Probably will take a good hour. We then want to hear from the public. I will then sit back, because I want to hear from my colleagues, obviously, and then we will take a vote. Before I turn it over to Bob Chase and John Hodgson, I just want to, I have to say some thank yous. And if I leave anybody out individually, please accept my apology ahead of time. But there is so much credit to go around here of what brings us here. First of all, this is a plan that represents the hard work of all the members of the city council. All of them. Mayor Protem Angelique Ashby is going to announce the first motel to house hundreds of people in Natomas as part of this master plan. Councilmember Loloey, I've been out with him now twice in his district, has worked very, very hard to increase the number of bed spaces and roofs for people who are homeless in North Sacramento in District 2. And the report reflects his hard work. Councilmember Jeff Harris has been a champion on these issues since the very beginning, at least of my mayorship, whether it was the first concrete shelter on railroad that he led. And he continues to work to find solutions both inside the River District and outside. And though we are not identifying a campus tonight, because we cannot, Councilmember Harris has been very, very involved in that big-time announcement to come. Councilmember Valenzuela has led the city's effort on safe ground. She was the first one to actually do it and deserves a lot of credit for forging ahead. And of course, puts forward significant number of sites in the master plan. Councilmember Jay Chenier has also been a champion, Vice Mayor, of these sets of issues for a long, long time and is about to open up the second major sprung shelter at WX and has just never flinched when it comes to doing the right thing and making sure that District 5 and the entire city is tackling this crucial issue. The same with Eric Gata, whether it's been women and children are leading on modular housing and actually seeking to add more sites than would have been, you know, acceptable, including at the last minute here as an addendum to the city council, the city council agenda, which was posted on Friday. Eric rolls up his sleeves and is doing this, and I thank you. Councilmember Rick Jennings, who everything is about values and helping the least among us, has helped forge through on the foreign road site and has done so much work both inside and outside this master plan to help further this issue. And Councilmember Mai Vang, heart and hustle, boy, that is an apropos description of the way you have gone about this, the way you've engaged your community, the way you have, again, not flinched and been willing to really step out there. And new council members, all of you, have really shown, I think, the public and all of us how serious you are taking this. And all of your staffs, who have worked extra hard. All the advocates who live this every day, and you know, I can't call out everyone, but Barbara Lynn Bush, Joe Smith especially, and others have been critical and very constructive at the same time. All the neighborhood associations, the P bids, which have worked enormously hard, even over the last couple of days, and I can't name everybody, but from the downtown to all of the neighborhood-based P bids, you have rolled up your sleeves to do this. Special thank you to Bob Thomas and Mary Egan, who played a crucial role here. SHRA, LaChelle Dozier, and Sarah O'Daniel, you are key to everything we do with your expertise and your passion, and I thank you for being a big part of the master plan. Sacramento Steps Forward, Lisa Bates and Scott Clark, thank you. You're a key piece of this. And of course, our city staff, Howard Chan and your team. You've helped us every single step of the way. Bridgette Dean, Danielle Foster, your planning and GIS folks, Greg Sandlin, Tom Pace, Josh Cannon, Garrett Norman, Richard Wrong, excuse me, Richard Sanders and Wrong Lu, thank you. The city attorney's office has been crucial here at every step, with Steve Agaki and Courtney Burdick and Susanna, yourself, I'll call it your leadership. ULI and AIA, which you're going to hear from in a moment, Bob Chase, and again, John Hodgson, and our great folks from Ascent. These consultants were among the best I have ever worked with. Chelsea Payne and Kevin Collin. Man, you took every curveball that we threw at you and you hit it out of the park. And finally, I really want to thank my entire staff and my office here for all the incredible work that they did. And especially to Julia Burrows, who's sitting here with me here today. Julia, with her typical modesty, made this list for me of people to thank, and of course, she left her name off, which one would only expect. Julia is retiring on Friday. She is retiring from city service. And what an incredible contribution you have made to this city. From the food program, you know, that we made up out of whole cloth, to the climate ordinance, an easy one, that was easy, not really, to taking over midstream from Jacob Itel and really spending untold numbers of hours working with difficult me and and everybody else here to bring this thing home. We're going to honor you more than one time, but you've done incredible public service. And I just wanted to say that. And finally, to the members of the community who spent untold numbers of hours attending meetings, participating, whether you like this, love this, hate it, you've taken part in a vital civic exercise. And the city is the better for it. Without further ado, let's get to the first part of the presentation. I want to turn it over to Bob and John. And again, this is intentional. We want the public to see and all of us to see and imagine, not just imagine, but commit to what safe ground could and should look like. Bob and John, you guys got 15 minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, Bob, are you on?
I'm trying, John.
Well, we can hear you. Can we get the presentation up? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's John Hodgson. Got a company here in Sacramento called Hodgson Company. We do real estate and land use. I'm also an active member of the Urban Land Institute, which is kind of the genesis of where this whole thing started that we're going to present tonight. With me is Bob Chase. He's an architect with Chase Consulting, been in private sector, been in public sector, including Chief Building Official for the city and formerly Deputy State Architect for the state of California. Also, who will be speaking shortly is Steve Waters. We've been working with Steve. He's the Executive Director of First Step Communities. They're providers of homeless services, supportive services. And our team has worked with Steve to make sure that the designs that we've come up with are consistent with the needs of the folks that'll be trying to benefit from these designs that we prepared. As I mentioned, that Bob and I are both active members of ULI, and the short summary of it is that we had come to the conclusion that, you know, the designs that were out there were in many cases, not very attractive. There weren't many units getting up. And we felt that we could engage the private sector and come up with something better, something that's more functional, more humane, safer, provided supportive services, and probably as important as anything, is compatible with the neighborhoods. And also, that's cost-effective. We were fortunate, we were able to engage volunteer services of three prominent architect firms here in town, Driveus and Blackford, Mogavaro Architects, and DLR Group. And all of them, including Bob and I, are all volunteers. These architect teams have designed what you'll see this evening. We're not saying these designs are by any mean perfect, but they're examples of what we think can show that these types of housing can be more attractive. They can provide social services. They can be functional. They can be humane. With that, I'm going to introduce Steve Waters, and he'll talk a little more about the services and about his organization.
Thank you, John. May I have the next slide, please? Again, my name is Steve Waters. I'm the Executive Director of First Step Communities. We're the current group that's administering the Safe Ground Program for the city. And we were happy to join with John and Bob and the rest of the team to represent the service providers in the community in this design. Our vision in putting this together, as you can see there, is to provide Sacramento's houseless residents with not just shelter, but with support, community, and care needed to realize their independence, inherent worth, fulfillment, and quality of life. What I'd really like to pull out of that is community. We're trying to help design communities, a place where people can feel they belong and can start the healing process. Next slide. So, in doing what it says here, helping provide independence, inherent worth, fulfillment, and quality of life, we're trying to meet some of the goals we see in these different papers here. We need to build support and trust with individuals, provide flexibility in the programs we help administer to them and with them. Definitely, safety and security is number one. You'll hear me speak a bit more about that in a minute. That sense of community and belonging that I mentioned is important. And ownership and autonomy. We want to design to address not just more beds, but these actions that we list here that are so important to help people grow and heal. Next slide, please. On the left there are the community design considerations. This is something that we tried to bring to the thinking of the architects. He did such a great job here. And I won't go down that whole list, but these design considerations, we felt are really important because designed properly, our sites can provide safety. They can facilitate the individual's progress, and they can help build sustainable operations. I just want to focus on one of these for just a moment. And that's number one, there are the access control and security attributes. This is kind of a number-one critical consideration. We want controlled access to our sites. In effect, we want gated communities, fenced and gated, where we can control access for visitors. We can control who comes and goes, and we can protect the people we're trying to help. So that's a very critical one. Hopefully, in the future, we'll have meetings where we can discuss all of these. On the right, we bring to this as not just administration, but service provider. Both in-house services we provide and collaborative services of many partners that we work with. And these services, again, there's not time to read them all and discuss them all with you, but these services are brought in to do a number of things. One, help stabilize the lives of the people we're working with. Help provide growth opportunities for them. And for each individual, a unique plan that meets their unique needs and helps them develop an exit strategy for where they want to go from these communities. Part of that is to develop income or to join a supportive program. And of course, the end goal is to find people permanent housing. Next slide. One of the things that I wanted, just take a second to talk about before we move on and look at these communities, is our concept of cohort groups. We believe that to satisfy, deal with the issues that people face and to help them succeed, we need to develop different tracks and different groupings of people within the community. We have a fast track for people that are engaged in moving quickly through case management services, and in some cases, already employed. We want to group those people together and get the right kind of specialized staff working with them, perhaps bringing in things like employment and job readiness training. We need behavior health tracks. We need a recovery track to help people that are struggling with different substance abuse. We want a track for new people entering the program and trying to decide which direction they want to go. And finally, I think we need a special track for families with children, where we can provide them the special help they need and special consideration for the children. So with that, that's kind of what's behind the involvement of First Step Communities in trying to contribute to the design of these communities. And that design includes not just the shelters that we choose, but also the programs that we bring to it. With that, I'll turn it to Bob Chase to take us to the designs.
Thank you, Steve. And I have had some audio problems, so... Am I coming through?
Yeah, a little like within echo, but that's okay.
I'm not sure how to get rid of that, but
It's all right.
Give it a try. If I can't, if it's difficult to hear, John can pick it up. But as Steve mentioned, we had three local, well-known architecture firms step up to assist us on this. Driveus and Blackford, Mogavaro Architects, and DLR Architects. Each of them took a different approach to supportive housing here. And the intent is not that there are only three approaches. These are really a menu of options and can be combined in any manner and adapted to any site. So thinking, again, think of them as concepts as we move forward. Moving on to the next slide. Actually, I should have been on that one, so. B item, I've been discussing Option A, which was Driveus and Blackford. Option B is Mogavaro Architects, looking at tiny homes as a method of supportive housing. And then finally, C is presented by DLR Group Architects, and we'll get to that one. That could be a combination of a number of types of housing. Next slide. This one, this first one, my Driveus and Blackford, is perhaps the most easily deployable and most quickly deployable scheme. The intent is, it's labeled campsite housing. We think a better name might be canvas cabin housing, but the idea is that these could be fairly quickly, you know, deployed, set up, and occupied, very, very quick manner. Next. Thank you. And you can see these clusters of tents would accommodate one to two people. In the centers of them could be shade structures that would allow people to hang out outside. You heard Steve Waters mention, you know, groupings and comfort levels. We can't just plunk down three or 400 tents on a big field. We have to have people living in groups that make them feel comfortable, their own neighborhoods. So that's the intent here, and all of the firms have taken that approach. Next. Kind of a diagrammatic approach. You can see in the upper left, a typical unit could be a room, and then with a porch, an outdoor area that could handle storage as well as a sitting area. The key here, I think, is to look at the bigger diagram, the site communities. They're organized in groups or small neighborhoods that people can feel comfortable in, and yet, the entire project can be supported by central services that Steve would provide. Next. Kind of an overall view of that type of installation. Again, you can see the clusters, each one of those higher tents indicates a central area that the tents would gather around. So the people have, you know, they know who's there. They know who is in that area. It's their neighbors. But they share the common facilities, toilets, admin, shower facilities. Next. Again, we're looking at some of the, on the left, some of the ways they could be assembled, and they need to be assembled very quickly and very inexpensively. You can see on the diagrams up above, you know, how these could be gathered around to create little courtyards that are shared. And then below that, you know, an indication of how the the unit, but also the balcony or the terrace outside could be used as well for bike storage with locks. Next. The second way of looking at it is tiny homes. And this is by Mogavaro Architects. This is one approach you see here. They've taken a slightly different tact to this than we normally think of for tiny homes. Next slide, please. Rather than individual units, which is still always an option, they've looked at combining them into groups of four. And what's interesting here is the dimensions, a 10-foot wide by 40-foot-long group of four units. That's exactly the size of a portable classroom, a half of one that is carried on a trailer occupied. So these would be very transportable and energy-efficient, since four tiny homes are sharing common walls, which would stretch out on the energy, you know, heat gain and energy loss. So and again, you can see each one is set up for a single purpose. If we had two people, you can see in the first units, one and two can be combined by having a door opening between the two, like you get hotel rooms connected. Next. And again, showing in the upper left, upper right, how that could be transported on a trailer, similar to classrooms. So I won't go into the detail of the construction on the left. And you can see how they could be combined down below, creating, again, courtyards that are smaller and not the entire site, so that people know who's out there. Next. And an overall view of how these might be clustered, grouped around courtyards, so that, you know, people have that. That common space is very, very important, we feel, as Steve Waters indicated. Next. A different way of combining these, perhaps on a bigger site. But again, in all cases, you can see there needs to be a recognizable and small enough common area that everybody knows who would be out there. Those would be your immediate neighbors. And I apologize if I'm going too fast, but I think we want to just get the concepts out here for, you know, for thought. Next. Next slide, Stephanie. Thank you. And the third approach is what we call a hybrid approach by DLR Group. And this is perhaps a combination, what we'll see on the site plan, of perhaps a sprung structure and other types of structures on the same site. Next. The upper right, that longer building you see, the Bridge Temporary Housing Media Crisis, that would be a sprung structure. We'll see that on the following slide. The intent here is a one-site, and this is about an acre, could handle kind of immediate people who are just coming in and do need, you know, constant support within that central structure, and then work their way out into the more individual housing types outside to the left in the courtyard. This shows things like the quad, common spaces that would be shared by everyone here, and flexible space, parking provided for some of the residents, but also for the service staff that would come in on a daily basis. And one thing to note here is the perimeter is well landscaped. That's going to be key, I think, depending on where these sites are located. Next. That's, the left is what I think we've all seen as a sprung structure, which can be very flexible and can handle things in a lot of different ways and used inside. The upper right-hand side is kind of more the critical, you know, crisis housing scenario before people could move out into individual units, dining, central dining, whether food is brought in by trucks, things to be dealt with. Next. And just a couple of overall views of how this might be organized. Again, we all see the recognizable sprung structure on the right, but we can see the smaller units, tiny homes, courtyard, the bigger units, other shared showers and toilet facilities and common office facilities, and then some outdoor space that the people can share, basketball court down to the left, and perhaps a dog park. Next. Again, a dog park that, you know, we know a lot of the people have dogs that are homeless, and we don't want them to have to give them up. So the idea would be to include places that can deal with all of the things that the homeless folks need. Next. And again, an outdoor space. All sites may not be large enough to accommodate this kind of a thing, but if they can, we would certainly recommend it and hope to design it in there. And I think the right-hand side is a reminder that all of these approaches must be accessible. We know a number of the homeless people are disabled, and we have to be sure that they have access to all of the facilities on these developments. Next, and that is really the conclusion of our presentation here. Again, another courtyard view. And we, as I said, these are not specific sites. These are ideas of what could be done on any of the sites that the mayor will be discussing and talking about this evening. So thank you all very much, and we'll turn this back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Bob, John, and Steve. Really impressive. Thank you, Bob, John, and Steve. Really uh, impressive. And we deeply appreciate the amount of time you and and your colleagues uh, from the design and architecture community have spent uh, putting forward these ideas. And when we get to the resolution, you will see that while um, we mentioned ULI and AIA and and mandate, if you will, that the uh, city consider the principles that you have brought forward here because this is exactly the kind of approach that I know we are going to want to take. So we'll save questions because I'd ask you if you could stick around, maybe late, but um, let's get through the full presentation here from the public and then we're gonna, we may get right back to you, okay? Very good. Let me now turn it over to Vice Mayor Shinir to speak about another crucial part of this overall approach, and that is the good neighbor policies that are, that again, the requirement is embedded in the resolution that we are going to take up tonight. But let's see if we can bring a little bit of uh, specifics to what we mean when we say every project has to have a good neighbor policy. Vice Mayor.
Uh, thanks. Um, and how long? Give me a time limit here because we could.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes. Great. So I I wanted to actually talk about this in two ways and really reflect back on the WX Navigation Center that hopefully will open by the end of this month. We have an August twentieth date of hopefully getting the keys and getting volunteers of America in there quickly. Uh, we met and we had a, we had a piece of time there um, due to the former president. Um, where we we were not getting the site, but in the beginning, we met for about a year with the neighborhood. And talked to them a lot about what we were trying to accomplish. And and my goal there was really to promote ownership of the shelter by the neighborhood. We think, and I thought that that was the best way of sustaining it. Um, and some of that comes from the visit we had to Seattle a number of years ago, where some of us met with some city council people from Seattle. And you know, what they told us, and they they would move their safe grounds every hundred and twenty days. And they said it was the same thing every time, uh, that they would want to move it somewhere and folks would come out. And this was their language with their torches and pitchforks, uh, not wanting to have this in their neighborhood. Um, that the council would move forward, they would cite the uh, safe ground. These were, these were very different than what we're looking at. But by the end of a hundred and twenty days, people in the neighborhood were sorry to see people go. Um, because they had done a number of things. They had walked the neighborhoods for safety. The neighbors would bring blankets, they would do food, things like that. And so that was really what we were aiming for, uh, was ownership by the neighborhood and a real connection. So it just, so the shelter was just not marginalized at the end of the neighborhood. Uh, we wanted to do that in a few ways. One is not recreate the wheel. So in Oak Park, fortunately, we have a lot of great services, um, uh, Community Against Sexual Harm. Um, uh, a a number of the Sacramento Food Bank, certainly, um, Urban League, Asian Resources and others. Um, and we wanted to build on what was there so to involve those folks in the, in the shelter itself. Uh, we put that and working with SHRA into the RFP for an operator saying, we want to really see how you're connecting to the neighborhood. The other thing that that we thought we could do, which was really important, was we knew we would need three meals a day for up to a hundred people or a few more, if you count uh, the folks running the place. And I wanted to make sure that we were using restaurants in the neighborhood and the Culinary Academy at American Legion High School to get that food. So let's put money back into the neighborhood and really make this something that everybody could be proud of. So those were, those are the kind of the big elements. And then we also went and worked with our advisory committee over the course of a year on a good neighbor policy. And and this is relatively standard, but I'll just go through some of the elements in it. Um, that that we would, we would think. One is kind of describing the center's operation, uh, wanting an experienced operator there. Um, really understanding what the hours are uh, of the shelter and what the curfews were and that there was a fence around it so people couldn't just come in and out uh, without that. Uh, we wanted to bring services to the shelter at this point with a hundred individuals there. There's an economies of scale of rather than sending people out to get services, bringing them in. And a lot of this stuff has been borne out at the Metta View Center as well. Uh, guess we get three, three meals a day. So so some basic things about the operations, what it would look like and what expectations people could have in the community. Uh, noise is an issue sometimes, so no amplified sound. Um, and and no noise kind of outside the shelter as well. Um, cleanliness is huge. Um, the area around the center would be kept pristine. That was something that we wanted to put in. If you look at the the site today, there's four encampments within two blocks. Those are what we want to go after first and really clean up the neighborhood with the folk. Get those people into the shelter and clean up the neighborhood as we can and show people what it is. Continuously working with the neighborhood, having the advisory committee, which was meeting on a monthly basis, continue to meet. Um, and and really understanding what was happening there and having the advisory committee get data from the shelter. And again, Metta View is a good example. I think SHRA is really doing a great job showing us how many people are there, what's happening with them as well. Site security is a huge issue, as you all can imagine. Uh, not just about the police, but really about building the facility with appropriate lighting, um, with appropriate cameras there so that there aren't places to hide, things like that. Um, and and again, having an eight-foot fence around the entire facility. Not with slats in the fence so you can't see through, um, because we didn't want it to look like a prison. But a fence for the security both of the neighborhood uh, and and those who lived around it. Um, a couple of the other components, um, I talked a little bit about the ongoing monitoring and data. Um, continuing our community advisory discussions um, on an ongoing basis. Having a guest counsel so that there is some governance participation by the residents of the shelter was also very important. So those are, those are a lot of standard pieces, but again, I just want to come back to it a little bit. Um, however, we can create um, ownership by the community, having them involved in all of these pieces. Um, and having a good neighbor policy, which may look different at different sites that we're looking at. Um, but having it there and having the ability to monitor and enforce it along the way.
Thank you, Jay. That was Vice Mayor. That was really terrific. And I know a lot of members have worked on this, including Councilmember Geta and his subcommittee chair Ian Barlow, who drafted sections of the Siding Plan Chapter on the Policies, uh, and also created the template in the draft. So thank you to you and everyone who did this. And you you are dealing with this in real time, as you just said, uh, with the WX Shelter. And I thought it was really important that uh, that we put forward that that is a, an important example and.
Yeah, and let me, let me just fo- one final recap, too. I mean, the the good neighbor policy is as much for the residents and having, since they've been on the streets, since they've felt trauma, having them feel safe and secure where they are. And I think the architect said this a little bit ago, um, as much for that as members of the community feeling safe.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm gonna move now to the tentative finance plan. And it is tentative because I will, I will acknowledge uh, that even after we pass the resolution tonight, we will not have passed uh, our ARP plan. Uh, I do acknowledge and recognize that. Um, and at the same time, I'm confident um, that in the end, this group of public officials, of elected officials will choose to make um, a, a, a very important contribution out of ARP uh, for uh, for this cause and the implementation of the S- Master Siding Plan. So if we go to, which slide is this, Julia? Slide six, if we can, Mindy, Ms. Capi, our city clerk. And thank you to you as well, Madam Clerk, for you and your staff's work on helping us get this to uh, to today's date. We appreciate it. So this is an example of how we can get to a hundred million dollars. Um, we are going to get forty million dollars over two years for HAP three. Uh, we have leftover funding from HAP two that has not been committed. We are going to gain um, home investment funds uh, as part of our regular allocation. But we're also receiving special uh, American Relief Plan dollars under the home program. Small grant from ESG, and then I presume only for sake of discussion, that we would take forty-one million dollars out of our hundred and twelve million, twenty-point-five a year for the next two years to get to a hundred million dollars. And the resolution will call for our team um, to take this hundred million dollars and uh, to seek a partnership, both fiscal and um, and and programmatic with the county to functionally pool uh, as much money as we can. And then to take this unprecedented amount, unprecedented amount of money, combine it with the pre-approved sites and go to work. And I'll go, I'll speak about the resolution in a moment. Um, I wanted to say that um, we are having very positive conversations with our county partners. And I'm not going to assume or presume anything. They have to make their own, uh, have their own process and deliberations. I respect that. But we are all on the same page when it comes to the urgency of the moment and the priority of alleviating this emergency. And like us, they're getting significant uh, resources from the state and federal government. And I hope that over the weeks ahead, we will be able to come back to our respective bodies and actually define a, a, a real partnership, uh, even beyond our existing partnership, which is substantial. But to really go at this now, you know, critics say, and I understand it, well, this is two years worth of funding, uh, Mr. Mayor. What happens after two years? And it's a fair question, but I will say this and say the obvious. Um, this money is available to us and we would be negligent to not take it and to put it to the very task that is before us. In terms of long-term funding, I know this, success begets success and success begets money. If we can move the needle, if we can help thousands of people, if we can show a visible and demonstrable difference in our neighborhoods and in our city, we will get more money. We always do. If you remember, four and a half years ago, uh, there was little money on the table, um, state money or federal money. And we have clawed our way to a hundred million at a time, whether it was whole person care or the first heap or Measure U and our general fund money. And now you've got the federal government stepping up. And by the way, we haven't even begun to see what the federal contribution for infrastructure and housing is going to mean for our city. Because today, the Senate passed the trillion to one, one-point-two-trillion-dollar package that does not include housing. You read the papers, I do. I know you all do. That's now set, sets up the next stage, which is a three-point-five-trillion-dollar budget act, which will include housing and homelessness. And so there will be more resources. But this shows us and shows you that getting to a hundred million dollars is relatively easy. Nothing's easy, but it is relatively easy. We're not voting on this in particular tonight, but I think it was important that in addition to the architecture, the good neighbor policy, to see that the Siding Plan is not put forward tonight in isolation. It's combined with the resources to be able to do what we all want to do and need to do. Thank you. Now we'll move to, as I said earlier, uh, the main event here, which is the Master Siding Plan and Resolution. And I'm gonna take, I hope, fifteen minutes and no longer, because I want to get to the public and then I want to get to my colleagues. And I want to spend most of my time actually on the resolution itself because the plan has gotten significant amount of highlight, which is good. But I want to make sure that we talk about the resolution, which um, Julian Barrows and I and a few others crafted with the input of the city manager and city attorney and 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 a lot of the city family here, but it it's written i- in a purposeful way, and I'll get to it in a minute. First of all, I want to again commend my colleagues for leading an unprecedented public input process over seven months here. I can hear any criticism of this and legitimate criticism. People are having the right to their opinion on anything. But it won't, it'll fall on a few deaf ears, I think, if people say we knew nothing about this. Because my colleagues have led at least two hundred community meetings, webinars and Facebook Live sessions. They have made at least five thousand two-hundred-and-fifty individual contacts. They have reached out and and dialogued with over a hundred business organizations, neighborhood associations and nonprofits. And then they've gone well beyond that. The extra effort on surveys on Facebook Lives in multiple languages, in Vietnamese and Cantonese District Six. Members driving their entire districts. The extensive conversation with Sacramento RT with Caltrans headquarters, which is a big victory, by the way, the Caltrans piece of this. And all the district offices, UC Davis Health, our major hospital system, all the homeless advocacy and outreach organizations and the nonprofits. And and so seven months of intensive outreach where people have been heard. And we can go district by district, um, and I'm happy to and put it on our social media if that i- if that helps. It's really, really important. I said earlier, we had the benefit of a sent, this incredible consulting group that has done our general plan and housing element. And they've never quite had an assignment like this. They are available for questions and they again have done an outstanding job. This was and is a unique idea. It's based upon a big idea. Namely, that trying to cite anything relating to homelessness, one site at a time or even two sites at a time, cannot by definition get the job done. And we've talked about it in the past, but when we looked at other experiments, like the base closure process in this country and saw how if you construct a process that that has the input of the community and the community leadership, but brings it all together for the elected leadership to cast one vote, one vote up or down. And that vote then represents the approved plan, the approved siding plan for the entire community. We were off to the races together. And yes, we had some si- some real philosophical approaches to this. First of all, we said very clearly that the perfect could not be the enemy of the good or the great here. There's no perfect answer solution. There's no perfect cookie cutter way to do this where everybody is happy. Uh, a- at least at the beginning, we think most people are gonna be very happy um, a- after we implement this. But there is no perfection here. But what we wanted to do was address the volume. What was, try to address the numbers, was to try to say, not that, as I've said before, not that we can cure the problem, but that if we put our minds to it, if we put our resources to it, if we put our smarts to it and if we're strategic about it, that we can make a big difference, not just for the people who are suffering, but for the grace of God, there go I, but for our entire community. This is the most aggressive plan in the history of the city. No question about it. And it also is diverse in its approach. I've heard the concern and the criticism from advocates and from homeless people themselves that one size does not fit all. I've heard it from some of my colleagues here, that congregants shall. I've heard it from some of my colleagues here, that congregate shelter is not for everybody. That autonomy is important. And when you look at. The way this is broken down here, if we can go to slide. If we can go to. Slide three, please. You see that. The plan is a siding plan, but it's more than a siding plan. It's a programmatic plan. That we do take credit, so to speak, for existing new facilities. Some of which have not up and running yet, like the WX Shelter. The safe ground on Sixth Street is just in its infancy. The front street safe parking is in its infancy. The Grove in District Two is just in its infancy. The La Mancha Home Key Project. And obviously the Metaview Navigation Center is new. We include those and. If we can create the continuum of care that we talk about and that we intend to follow through on. We should open up space in all of these facilities. As we move people through to more permanent housing. But slide. And so. You've got existing facilities, then you have the new priority sites. And that is about half of the additional capacity, the nine thousand seven hundred seventy eight. People we estimate we can help. The other half of the programmatic strategies, which are in fact site specific. The large campus, which again, we can't give away here, but we are making real progress. And we should have an announcement within the next several weeks. On the motel conversions. You already know that Bridget and Danielle have got a number of motels. Up and running using vouchers. We know that. That SHRA is going to take the lead on the project Home Key. We know that Mayor Bertam Ashby again is about to announce. A motel in District One. Councilmember Harris is about to announce a motel. In District Three, they can't reveal the names in until it's signed because that. Raises the price frankly. And then you've got scattered site, the other half. Beyond the existing and new priority sites. Is about half of the number. And then you say, well, God, is this all going to be just safe ground, whatever that means in terms of the the tents? Or is it all going to be, are we going to make people live in their cars? Or is that the only option we have? Look at this. In slide four. We have slide four up. That. The majority of the priority sites or about half of them are. Tiny and manufactured homes. That's autonomy for people autonomy. Yes, some additional emergency shelter and yes, some safe parking and safe ground. But safe ground can be what we saw. In the ULI presentation. If we choose, and I hope we do choose to do it that way. And so then you get to the sites themselves. And I know there has been some criticism about, you know, where, well, first of all. One of the principles of the last seven months is that if we're going to move fast. Then we need to put sites forward that the city can control. It's one thing to put up. A site that is privately owned and in fact, five of the twenty new sites or. Five of the twenty one new sites are privately owned and in tier two. There are a number of privately owned sites where members are working very hard to try to perfect. In agreement with the private property owner and that is great. Fifteen sites are publicly owned. Some of them are Caltrans, but we have an agreement with Caltrans already. This isn't hypothetical. They said yes, they said no to some sites, but they said yes to most of the sites. The RT Board still has to take action on several sites in the plan. But there are a number of sites that are plain city owned where we can get started on right now. The key takeaway for me and I hope you and the community after tonight is this. Once we vote yes, all sites and programs in the plan will be automatically approved. Two. Implementation will be the matter of highest urgency. And will not require. Additional actions will not require additional actions by the city council. You know, the details of the plan has been well publicized. There's not a single site on a park. Not at a school. And not on private property, except where there has been an agreement between the private property owner and the city. And then we get to the resolution itself, which I know most of the public may not focus on the resolution, but again. This resolution is relatively unique and I want to go through it because it speaks to the urgency. And it speaks to the fact that I don't know if this is a term of art. That we intend for this plan to be self executed. To be self executed. As little process as possible. Section one on page thirteen. This is a binding document designating the sites contained within as the locations. For tiny home communities, congregate shelters, permanent supportive housing, safe parking and safe ground. For organized camping, no further action is required for the city manager to begin implementation. Of the master siding plan. We direct the city manager and the executive director of SHRA to implement the program strategies contained within the plan to add additional capacity. We again direct the city manager to begin implementation of the master siding plan immediately. We authorize the city manager to borrow from the eleven million dollars contained in our housing trust fund. In section three and then say that the resources will be replenished dollar for dollar as soon as the city council approves. The American Rescue Plan. So the housing trust fund is not at jeopardy, but we don't have to wait till the approval of the ARP plan used housing trust fund. Let's get going. We are going to, the resolution says that we're going to bring back an emergency ordinance amending the city code to remove the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit. It's the manager's agreement execution authority. If we're serious about this being. This being a full delegation and we want implementation and we trust our city manager, which we do. Then we want to free him from that requirement. Section seven, again, an unprecedented step with these so-called tier two sites that are not yet perfected. What the resolution says. Is that. If the council member in the district and the city manager agree on a lease, a purchase or whatever. Is necessary and appropriate. To get control and access to the tier two site. And it fits within the hundred million dollar framework in terms of the priorities. Then neither the manager nor the council member has to return to council for approval. It's deemed approved. Now, if there's a dispute or something. Then it would come back to the city council, but otherwise. Get going on tier two. And then section eight is consistent because it directs the manager to allocate funding. His discretion to the sites and programs that provide the most immediate impact to alleviate the crisis of homelessness in the city. If we had a different city manager, that might be kind of risky. But we have a city manager who I know you know will work with all of us. In terms of moving forward, the only thing we're going to ask of him, I'm going to ask of him is to move fast. And to move with great urgency. And then we incorporate the ULI standard. We couldn't say do the ULI exactly as they presented it because as Bob and John said. There they put forward a concept here, but the resolution directs the manager to work with ULI. And then section ten, this may seem like an odd one. But the council directs the manager to take all steps necessary to allow efficiency housing to be stalled immediately on identified sites. We had. You know, some miscommunication maybe. When it came to the first safe ground site at Sixth and X where Bridget wanted to put up tiny homes. And there was a big delay within the city because there was not, we couldn't do utility hookups quickly. And I said. Well, we're not requiring utility hookups for the REI tents. And we're allowing, we're sanctioning that safe ground. Why aren't we getting people in a pallet home or another? Another shelter so that. We can bring people inside and do the utilities later. Well, section ten in a very general way seeks to tells the city. Get around everything. Here's the deal, everything but life and safety. Get around it and get around it quickly, please. We obviously incorporate the requirement in section eleven of a good neighbor policy. Section twelve is important because we make the finding that these sites, especially the publicly owned sites are CEQA exempt. So we're not going to get hung up with a bunch of. With a bunch of additional process. Section fourteen. Stays the obvious and is consistent with our direction already. As I said, we're having very constructive conversations with our county partners. Well, this directs the manager to formalize. That partnership with Sacramento County. Both the financial piece, but also roles and responsibilities, roles and responsibilities. Section fifteen. Directs SHRA and or the city manager to go for it when it comes to Home Key. Not just two motels, you know, we got, you know, one and three beautiful. But four more because we got to get to seven hundred and fifty new rooms over the next ten years, some of them for temporary. Living and some of them for. Permanent housing. Then we say with the scattered site strategy, which you know, which is a very good strategy, we want to ensure that we're not supplanting. Existing affordable housing stock if at all possible. Section seventeen was an ask from the advocates and I think a very good one. About making sure that everything that we do includes workforce training. For the people that we are trying to help. Councilman Gueda and others asked that we really focus also on mobile crisis services in partnership with providers because that's going to be a key piece of this. Jonathan Portius and others are really focused on. Crisis, we got to bring the outreach and the services to to the people. And then evaluation, evaluation, evaluation and regular reports back. And this gets to my last point before we turn it over to. The public and then to my colleagues. And that is the question of implementation. Man, there's a lot of work and passion that has gone into. The development of this binding master plan with real force and effect. And yet we all know. That it will only be a piece of paper. Unless it is implemented with the same urgency, with the same passion, with the same all hands on deck approach. As what went into the development of this plan. And we heard from Bridget today. And we're very lucky to have her. And I know Howard and the city team are not are working overtime on trying to. Stand up the existing sites that are still. Not yet up and running like the WX Shelter, right? There's a lot of time going into all of this. If we put a hundred million dollars on the table. And we approve enough sites and programs to help nine thousand plus people a year. The only thing that could stand in our way of moving the needle is if we do not. Put together the infrastructure. To implement this rapidly and effectively. I compare this to. The emergency operations approach. We're got a great emergency operations leader in Daniel Bowers. We have a great, you know, I think we have a police department and a fire service that responds to. Emergencies and crises in very effective ways. In fact, there's protocol and it's part of the city culture. You know that we all gather, everybody's. You know, twenty four seven and different shifts and everyone's on computers and site locations and. It's the real feeling of camaraderie, but also of purpose. And as I said earlier this afternoon, you know, hand this all to Bridget and DCR. No. No, the community expectation. Is that we are going to apply. An emergency operations center approach. To this most urgent of community crisis. There's nothing more urgent than this, nothing. It's roiling our city. It causes more upset. It causes more pain and suffering for the individuals, but also for our communities. And we are putting our hearts into this as policymakers and that will be reflected tonight. And I love the city team. I'm talking about the culture and adapting the culture. To make sure that this does not. Roll out incrementally or slowly. This is a state of emergency, is a state of emergency. And it needs to be seen as a state of emergency and we need to act upon it as a state of emergency. And so this is. A big bull move. And it's an opportunity for us. I'm confident we'll take it tonight and then the question will be. What do we do tomorrow? To make sure that. This isn't just a. A great document. But a guide to showing the state and the country. That homelessness need not be hopelessness. Cause it doesn't have to be. Thank you. All right. How many, how many members of the public do we have?
So I currently have twenty six members of the public that wish to speak. Are you ready to?
Okay, let's, let's hear from the public.
I'd like to make my announcement before the public speaks, mayor, if that's okay with you.
Go ahead.
That be all right?
Well, I'd actually like to hear from the public first. Is that, I mean, if you want to, that's okay.
Well, I think it might answer some public questions is the only thing up to you. I will defer to you. This is your. Your master siding plan. I'll do every whichever thing you would like.
Go ahead, because if it, if it helps answer questions from, from the public, go right ahead.
Okay, okay. First of all, mayor, thank you for the presentation. And for hiring the consultants to pull it all together and. Bringing the uniting the council to move forward with one sort of up or down plan. And I know I've had, you know, a few people mentioned to me that there's not a dot. In District One on the map. That does not mean there's not a project in District One. There are actually three projects in the mayor's. Proposal listed in District One. Two of them though are scatter site and one of them does have a location. But I couldn't disclose it quite yet because I didn't want to jeopardize the overall project, but. Very good news tonight is that I can tell you so mayor. I know you don't want to make changes, but I have a dot for you to add. In District One and I can officially tell you the location. So Natomas District One will be the home to the city's first. Family shelter. The address is Promenade Circle. The hotel is currently Staybridge. And it will become the Promenade Project led by LaChelle Dozier at SHRA. And Jere at Jamboree Housing Corporation. Jamboree has already. Taken the leadership role here. They have twenty eight years of experience. Most of you should know them because. They did the Hotel Berry for us downtown as well, which is a wildly successful program. They've done ninety one developments, have more than. Eight thousand two hundred owns in their asset portfolio is more than one point one billion. Again, the program in Hotel Berry downtown is one of their most known. Projects and lucky for me, their regional leader Jere is actually an Natomas resident. Who lives not too far from this project. The project is a hotel. It is uniquely configured, mayor. It's perfect for housing of families. It has a mix of bedroom types. It is very rare to find hotels with one and two bedroom units that also include kitchens. The two bedroom units also have two bathrooms, which is a. A major find. Also, the entire hotel comes completely furnished at purchase. There are sixty three studios. Thirty nine one bedrooms, fourteen two bedrooms for a total of a hundred and sixteen units, mayor. Ten. Of those units will be emergency housing for families. And the remainder will all be. Sort of a longer term emergency housing with wraparound services. All for families, people with children experiencing homelessness. The amenities include play equipment, a swimming pool, picnic area, turf field that's being installed, a community room, a full community kitchen and dining, a computer room, laundry facilities. And uh, it is very close to several schools. There will be a 24/7 desk with uh, private security patrols and people on site 24 hours. The project will, will be service rich. It'll be a wraparound service model intended to help people with a lot of issues who, and, and individualized wraparounds for every member of the family. There will be three full-time supportive service coordinators for advocacy, independent living plans and all that. One program manager, plus after-school programming, adult ed, career counseling, health and wellness, and a skills building class mayor. And we have already negotiated a relationship with the Natomas Unified School District, who is the host school district, who will be providing Mayor a social worker. And that social worker will work on-site to, with the school-aged children to make sure that we do everything we can to keep them on grade level or get them caught up if, if need be. The rehabilitation for the project, Mayor, is relatively low because the units are so nice. I'm almost done, Mayor. This is your favorite part anyway. You don't want to cut me off here. This is the part where I tell you I don't need any of your money. All of your money that you have set aside for the projects listed in your proposals to date and using the city's money or the American Recovery Fund money, all of that can go to all the other projects so that we can expand our dollar because SHRA has come up with the local contribution match. The dollars needed for Project Home Key. So the remainder just waits for Project Home Key to be funded. But this project, and here's the question I've been asked the most, property has been secured with a purchase and sale agreement and the appraisals have been conducted. There are no relocations necessary. And uh, because of all of that and SHRA having the funding set up for Home Key, it means that we can be approved and families moved in, Mayor, as soon as Home Key is available as early as 2022, early 2022. And then I just want to, just lastly, just say to you, Mayor, that there must be a good neighbor policy and all due respect to the council members who have worked on them. We're going to use the SHRA draft neighborhood policy because it is the one that Jamboree uh, wants to work with. I assume this is a priority site. People have asked me that. I know it's a priority to me and I know it's a priority for the mayor and to SHRA. District One is also uh, noted in this plan with the 100 scatter sites. And as an update, the transitional age LGBTQ host homes has moved forward. We did do a town hall forum and there are half a dozen of those in play as well, Mayor. I just would, you know, I might have comments for the whole proposal afterwards and everybody else's stuff, but I wanted to be able to say to you today that while I know there are some folks who shared a one, one page out of your proposal that didn't include District One. I wanted you to know that we've been working on this for over a year, SHRA and myself. And we're very excited to be able to bring it forward and tell people the location today and be able to be a part of the solution. The capacity should be between about 200 and 600 individuals on any given day and obviously more than 1,000 annually. So Mayor, thanks for letting me put that out before public comment. Really proud to be a part of it.
Yep. Well, let me just say three things and we get to public comment. First of all, thank you. That is great news. Congratulations um, to you and the community. And second or third, I guess, is that um, this, the numbers are counted in the plan. Because we assumed, um, and it is written in the plan actually, that District One, you had committed to a motel. And so that is included in the numbers already. But to, to again, show the public that anything that we talk about conceptually is real is a good and great thing. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Good opportunity, Mayor.
Congrats. Okay, let's go to the public testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first speaker is Mike Jaskey.
You ready?
Please proceed.
Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. My name is Mike Jaskey, co-chair of the Sacramento Homeless and SAC Act Homeless and Housing Committee. I'm a member of Councilmember Garrett's District Six. A member of his District 16 that contributed to the master plan effort. SAC Act submitted a letter to each of you and the rec, and the record expressing our qualified support for the master sighting plan. SAC Act expressly supports the approval of the 20 Tier One sites listed in the plan and many more Tier Two sites very soon, we hope. But we do have some reservations about other aspects of the proposed plan. In my time tonight, I want to focus on two concerns with the text of the resolution. First, Section Eight's direction to the city manager and second, the combined effect of Sections Three through Five delegating approval authority for all future contract activity to the city manager. In Section Eight, the city manager is directed to allocate funding to the sites and programs that would provide the most immediate impact. We think that you should be more thoughtful and develop sites in a manner that maximizes likely progression of residents toward housing success. We also have concerns about relying upon tents in Sacramento's climate, brutal in the summer, cold in the winter. We suggest you immediately develop the Tier One sites that are suitable for tiny home villages with all the necessary support structures that enable counseling, referral, et cetera, as shown by the ULI AI, AI team earlier today. Finally, in Section Three and through Five of the, of the plan, the city council is effectively delegating approval of all contracts needed to implement the plan. The plan is a very weak implementation process and it removes most of the implementation from public view. The council shouldn't be involved in a lot of this detail, but expert opinion input is needed. SAC Act proposes the creation of a formal advisory council to the city council manager.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
This council would be consulted about major elements of implementation and since DCR is very thinly staffed, this would enable the city manager to acquire expertise beyond that present.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker.
It's a good, it's a good idea. Go ahead.
Next speaker is Bob Erlinbush. Bob Erlinbush.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you know, in the letter that we sent, we su- support the sense of urgency and the scale of the plan to keep uh, people safe and alive in a dignified setting. And we have guarded support for a number of other elements that are detailed in our, in our communication to the city council. But I do have a couple of points to make specifically. The, th- this plan should intentionally address systemic racism and equity issue intentionally by program design, hiring and tracking outcomes. And I would also urge us, since language is important, to address the systemic racism straight up by moving away, abandoning the word master and, and call the plan something else. Number two, implement an independent embossed person to hold programs accountable. Number three, as we move forward with a agreement between the city and the county to create a partnership, that that draft is open to public comment and input to ensure that the whole process uh, is, is transparent. I would urge us, number four, to conduct surveys and focus groups with our unhoused neighbors to give input in the concept design of the program. And then finally, agreeing with Sacramento Act to immediately create a community implementation and oversight committee consisting of diverse stakeholders, including people with lived experience of homelessness. Thank you again for your leadership.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Steve Blanton.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and members of the city council. We appreciate all your hard work and efforts on this. Uh, the Boise decision uh, made it necessary to, to bring this about and not being able to address uh, camping in public spaces. We believe that, that once this policy is enacted, uh, you should take a, a, a very strong stance in anti-camping, as the mayor said. There's an obligation to provide uh, shelter, but also an obligation to accept shelter. I think also there's a perception out there that uh, that Sacramento has gone beyond what was necessary and adopted a hands-off policy to uh, members of the unhoused community, specifically uh, acts that are illegal such as theft, assault, trespass and destruction of private property apparently go unpunished. Uh, and uh, this has, has uh, been a a, a large economic detriment to uh, members of the community who must hire private security and employ alarm systems and, and, and so forth. We think that a, a sustainable and consistent funding source is necessary for uh, to provide for the human needs of the unhoused individuals and, and are gratified that it seems to be moving in that direction. But we also think that uh, there are other avenues that, that we as a community should point to the Los Angeles City uh, council ordinances that uh, give further tools to deal with um, impeding the public right of way, prohibiting sitting and lying and sleeping in, in, in doorways and uh, near fire hydrants and, and so forth. We are heartened uh, that there's a good neighbor policy, but we'd point out that we also submitted a good neighbor contract. It seems some of the points in that policy are contained in the contract, but uh, just my initial impression is that the contract goes a bit further. So uh, we would like for you to consider that and, and, and adopt that as, in as much as possible. We do have an obligation to address the, the homeless crisis, but Sacramento also has an obligation to protect the safety and, and residents and businesses of Sacramento.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Emily Bayme Michaels.
Hi, good evening, Midtown Council. This is Emily Bay Michaels, Executive Director of the Midtown Association. As you know, Midtown Association represents the public spaces in 110 blocks of our central city. Over the last two years and well before that, we have continually seen an increase in calls for homelessness-related services. For example, in July of 2021, we experienced a 27% increase in safety-related calls compared to 2020 and a 54% increase uh, for year-over-year averages between 17 and 19. As a reminder, our P-Bid budget increases by a maximum of 3% year-over-year and we do not have the resources to mitigate these increasing demands. We have been asking of you all to step into this important space of leadership that you're coming into today and we really want to compliment and commend you for such an aggressive master plan that you've brought forward. We really acknowledge the contributions that each of you have made in specific ways to make this possible. I'd like to underscore a few points that have been made by the various presentations related to the implementation of the plan to ensure this is done in a thoughtful way that integrates well into the surrounding neighborhoods. Point one, really want to acknowledge Councilmember Shinier for his hard work in creating a good neighbor policy. We've seen that at work in our community and see it be very successful. So we encourage the continuation of that. We also, from a standpoint of the ULI presentation by our board member John Hodgson, would encourage a commitment to access and coordination. The city finding a path that allows for partnerships with nonprofits like ours and other providers as we serve the homeless population in our neighborhoods and then manage those sites is really critical. Finally, I'd agree with any of the comments made about this being the beginning of the pipeline. We want to make two final points. The first is that why we need urgency and implementation. We also need thoughtful, sustainable site implementation. And second, this really is the beginning of a long-term pipeline that we need to work together to build so that we have more permanent, long-term solutions for housing. Thank you so much for the effort and for the opportunity to address.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Terry Farnholz. Terry Farnholz. I'm going to go to the next speaker, Karen Humphrey.
Thank you. Good, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Karen Humphrey, a 20, 22-year resident of Midtown in District Four and a member of the Sacramento Act Housing and Homelessness Committee. As uh, our co-chair Mike Jaskey said, we do support the master plan, but with some reservations that I and other speakers will mention through the, through the hearing. I'll speak to three items that are really not specific parts of the plan itself, but must be addressed in the very near future if this sighting plan is to be as effective as we would all like it to be. The city must urgently address the severe lack of affordable housing throughout the city of Sacramento. The housing element you will soon consider is part of that effort, but we must soon know how the supply of affordable housing will actually be provided in an equitable fashion and soon. Point two, uh, it is urgent to distribute the emergency rental relief funding available right now. If SR, SHRA needs help to get all these funds out in the next few weeks, then the city should think about providing them with some funding for staff to, to do so. Evictions and greater homelessness are looming. Time is of the essence. And point three, the Sacramento Act has argued for years that you need a comprehensive county-wide plan to end homelessness in Sacramento County to set goals, allow you to measure progress, create a context for the use of resources and the roles of all the players, public and private. You need a context so we know whether strategies such as the one you're initiating tonight will effectively move us toward an end to homelessness. You have the ability to establish a process and pay for it. At the same time, you're moving forward on implementing this particular plan. So we urge you to do that, uh, and we thank you very much for the work that has brought us thus far and for your attention and uh, wish you the best.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Terry Farnholz. Terry Farnholz. How about Randy Nowes? Randy Canaus? How about Michael Alt?
Oh, uh, I'm Randy Canaus and I'm a volunteer at the UC Davis Medical Center Hospice Program. And I manage the program to honor veterans who are on hospice. I'm also associated with Joshua's House and will be performing ceremonies to honor homeless veterans who are on hospice once Ho- uh, Joshua's House is operational. The resolution, the um, master plan authorizes um, a site for Joshua's House to begin serving the homeless. For the past nine years, I've honored more than 150 veterans and uh, these ceremonies that we perform allow our way of saying thank you to the veterans and, and provide a sense of dignity, self-respect and pride for these men and women. And as you know, Vietnam vets in particular did not receive any thank you or any welcome home when they came home. These ceremonies are absolutely vital for uh, Vietnam vets in particular and so many of the homeless veterans uh, served in Vietnam. So as they rapidly approach their deaths, we can help these men and women restore a sense of honor and self-respect and dignity for them. So please approve the master plan so we can move forward getting Joshua's House up and running. And I want to thank you for allowing me to address you on this important issue this afternoon.
Thank you for your comments. Michael Alt?
Great, thank you. Michael Alt, uh, mem- members of the city council, city manager, mayor. Uh, really wanted to take some time uh, tonight and applaud you for your collective work towards streamlining the development and deployment of these shelters and housing. We know this has not been an easy process, but it is urgent that we identify solutions to get people off the street. Uh, I also want to take a minute to really acknowledge the business community, the faith community and the P-Bid community that came to the table uh, together to work on this goal. We have not had the opportunity to do so in the past and it was a very, uh, a very good effort for us to, I think, come with some mutual priorities. Ending homelessness must be a priority for Sacramento and there's no question that new approaches need to be explored to bring the most vulnerable off the streets. We fully support the effort to identify more housing opportunities and realize the city must also continue to align regional priorities, resources and accountability to address this crisis. We cannot stress enough the importance and need for the city and county to work collaboratively to ensure the success of attaching homeless services to solutions and particularly leveraging the county's ability to provide essential mental health resources and wraparound services to support the short-term stabilization while individuals move to more sustainable housing. As shelter sites are created, as you've heard, the good neighbor policy is going to be critical. The collaboration with community members, neighborhood P-Bids and homeless advocates is key. We've seen firsthand how critical it is downtown when these are not in place. Homelessness impacts every one of us and we cannot afford to wait. We must ensure a commitment to collaboration, prioritization of those with the greatest need, a connection to dependable and high-quality services and standards to build a livable community. We're ready to be part of this effort to work with you. We have partners that are ready to dive in uh, and address this and we thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Pat.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Patricia Barron. I'm a member of the public. I am not associated with any neighborhood group, nor am I a frequent commenter. I'm a member of the public. I live in Sacramento, District 3. I want to thank you all for your efforts to put forth the plan to address continuing rise of homelessness in Sacramento. But as a novice approaching this, I have two concerns. One has to do with the enforcement of existing laws related to offenses, and the other has to do with supportive services. My reading of the general, of the master plan mentions that you have a good neighbor policy, but I don't see how that is sufficient to ensure members of the public that the police will continue to provide any kind of enforcement. The Martin v. Bozy decision did not, does not prevent a city from the enforcement of existing laws related to criminal offenses such as assaults, thefts, prostitution, urinating or defecating in public, public intoxication, littering, including needles left on public or private property. Yet, the city of Sacramento Police have reported to members of the public that their hands are tied in this regard. Allegedly, even if they were to make an arrest, the fines cannot be repaid, repeat offenders cannot be detained, and the district attorney's office does not have the funds or motivation to prosecute anything that would be considered a misdemeanor offense. I think that the other aspect of this is that garbage services, while the plan says they will be provided, members of the public want to know that that will include any kind of spillover to other areas. The second point is that I feel that compassion includes enforcement plus supportive services. I agree with those people who have mentioned that the supportive services, that would be mental health services and drug addiction services for people who are residents in the designated sites, should be provided onsite or within easy access and transportation so they can get the help needed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Kathleen Williams.
Thank you. My name is Kathleen Williams. I come to you as a civil rights lawyer and a 20-year member of the Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee. And I am shocked that there is a total and complete silence about the fact that the plan is based on coercion and police-driven management and displacement of unhoused people. In the absence of a focus on permanent housing, the plan sets a dangerous precedent for segregation and warehousing of the poor. For Native Americans, they set up reservations, and I'm sure that they were described in glowing terms. We cannot base this plan on police power to force people into city-run encampments. And the other piece of this is that we cannot continue to manage unhoused people through police displacement. Homelessness must be criminalized, and police management as sweeps must stop. The city should work with the needs of informal encampments. We cannot arrest our way out of this crisis. All participation in city-run facilities must be entirely voluntary and uncoerced. There should be no obligation to accept what is offered. I thought that Councilman Sheneer made an interesting comment that he doesn't want it to look like a prison. Well, the present foundational implementation through coerced residents and the police patrolling outside the encampments to force everyone in or force them out of town is not tenable. We also support the ombudsman comment, the ombudsman requirement, as well as dealing with systemic racism, and we have written a letter-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, please review our letter which sets out the five key demands that we have as advocates for-
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mike Testa.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, my name is Mike Testa, and I'm the President and CEO of Visit Sacramento. First and foremost, thank you for putting in so much time, thought, and intention into this complex issue. Throughout this process, I've watched all of you put the priority and the well-being of people first. It has been your driver from top to bottom, and we at Visit Sacramento applaud it. There are a ton of moving parts to this, and as with the case of anything in life, it will not be perfect. But it is a visionary plan that offers a significant impact to the challenges that so many are facing. The proposed sites, the residents, the staff, and the neighbors in the surrounding areas are all important parts of the Sacramento community, and in that regard, holistic success can only be achieved through accountability and communication. A management plan that outlines standards for operation, including mitigation measures that promote the cleanliness and safety of the shelter sites and surrounding neighborhoods are paramount to success. Thank you again for this thoughtful and cohesive approach. We are excited to see where it goes, and we'll help in any way that we can.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jenna Abbott.
Hello, members of the City Council. Thank you so much for all of the effort that you have put into this homeless master siting plan. The River District, as I'm sure you're all aware, is no stranger to helping house the homeless. We currently have 849 units of sheltering, including a project Room Key Hotel in the 1.25 square miles encompassing the River District in Councilman Harrison's District 3. Homelessness is not decreasing, and the toll on the human suffering cannot be undersold, nor can the impact on our businesses and neighborhoods. People should not be living in squalor on our streets, sidewalks, and in the doorways of our businesses. We must offer people the opportunity to improve their lives and also have a plan for those who are resistant to or struggling with their mental health and/or drug addiction. We are thrilled to see our elected representatives on the council stepping forward to help solve what is clearly a humanitarian crisis of epic proportions and taking action that we know will help alleviate the pressure on the River District and on other areas in the city. We strongly support this homeless siting plan, and we urge you to pass it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Isaac Gonzalez. Isaac Gonzalez.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I've discussed this item with many of my neighbors, and I know firsthand that this proposal is polarizing. There are many opinions on whether this plan is appropriate, whether it goes far enough, whether it will result in meaningful change to the situation, and there are many opinions about the merits of this proposal, but there is consensus the status quo is unsustainable and unacceptable. It took a very long time for us to get to this moment in time in this crisis, and it will take a long time to address all the systemic causes and feeders to this crisis. But make no mistake, we are in crisis, and the most irresponsible thing we can do is nothing. So I'm hopeful that by taking action, we'll be one step closer to a day where all of our neighbors, including the unhoused, can live with dignity in an environment where a path to independence with basic humanitarian standards are not just pipe dreams. I'm hopeful that one day, the now two common sites of despair and human fragility we now witness daily on the streets of every, nearly every community in Sacramento will be a distant memory. And I'm immensely sympathetic to the residents who are fearful that service locations near their homes and businesses will cause discomfort and unwanted activities. I encourage everyone who is interested to get involved in this process and participate. Community participation will make the implementation better, and better implementation will help alleviate the suffering of our at-risk populations. All of us at some moment in our lives have relied on the helps of others to overcome uncertainty, hardships, and difficulty. We must not separate ourselves from the unhoused community and lump them in with the bucket of others. They're Sacramentoans, they're Americans, they're our neighbors, and they're our brothers and sisters. I don't believe the modern condition has hardened our collective hearts so badly that we are callous beyond compassion. This is a monumental moment in our history. We all have our roles to fulfill, and future generations may look back one day and see this as part of a series of actions that finally address our collective failure in this regard. Let's all hold each other accountable for this immense responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Daphne Harris.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I appreciate you presenting this extended plan to the community. I appreciate ULI giving a reduced cost to it. One thing that I'm concerned about is I would like to see more local construction and implementation teams involved in the plan. I understand you're trying to put a resolution forward that will not be reviewed for implementation further. I think that needs to be a concern. This proposal is the first time that we've seen the proposal in this particular format to the public. We have discussed components, but we did not discuss the overall plan as it was presented by the mayor. I'm concerned also about parking not being considered, and we need to look at ratio to land structure. We also need to look at noise and density in the areas of implementation. We also need to look at ownership to leasing ratios to ensure that the housed and unhoused individuals are moving towards homeownership and greater stability. We need to look at economic equity. We need to look at economic legacy and economic wealth being distributed across all families, homeless and unhoused. One of the concerns that I have is that we are trying to move this resolution forward without any evaluation at a later date. I find that to be an error, and I find that to be something that would be detrimental to the future of the youth in our, in our communities. This is a plan that's going to last for the next 10 to 20 years. I think it merits having more evaluation and more eyes on it. Thank you very much for putting this together, and I appreciate you giving the public the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Manuel Nguyen Rosto.
Hi, good evening. I'm a resident of Elmhurst. I'm a board member of the Elmhurst Neighborhood Association and member of the District 6 Master Plan for the Unhoused Working Group that contributed to this, to this plan. First of all, I want to recognize the hard work that was put into the plan. I want to thank all of the working group members and all of the other, all of the other individuals in other districts that helped identify sites and their plans, and the city staff that I saw working so hard to identify locations and negotiate agreements. And while I recognize that the proposed plan might not solve the full crisis, and there's more commitments that still need to be made by the city, county, and state, I want to show my support for what is drafted here. No plan is perfect, and this one is no exception, but as has previously been mentioned, it moves our city forward in the right direction when it comes to not just solving the homeless, the unhoused situation, but on getting them on their feet. I'm glad to see that there's two purple sites in the district that I live in, District 6, and I want to see more in the district. And I also want to encourage all neighborhoods and district leaders to support these efforts and encourage all council members to continue to take on this issue and continue to identify sites so that this becomes a true citywide effort. And finally, I want to say that these efforts make our city stronger. They go hand-in-hand with good neighbor policies. They make sure that sites in our city are actually being utilized for the betterment of our communities. Moreover, it teaches us something about each other. When, when you visit these sites, you learn about, about how effective they are, about the hard work of different leaders in Sacramento, of different volunteers that are doing what, what needs to be done to help each other. So it makes us a stronger city. So thank you again, and I want to see more of this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Dr. Diane Wolfe.
This is a great first start, but the city must acknowledge and address the need for a substantial and proportionate increase in new affordable housing to have any hope of truly addressing the issue of homelessness. The city needs to stop ingenuously projecting 100% turnover in shelters and transitional programs in six months when there is nowhere for people to go. The city has to stop relying on scattered-site housing and master landlord leasing as its primary source of housing, because without building new affordable housing, the supply of rental housing is just going to diminish. The subsidies are going to increase with market rate rents increasing. In addition to that, and so the city will increase, experience ever-increasing costs with no gain in supply. The city also needs to respect the reality that many homeless individuals are the victims of interpersonal trauma. They're not psychologically able to live with multiple roommates, and forcing them to do so is counterproductive to their growth and, and healing. The city must create a robust program in parallel with this program to directly commission and fund the building of affordable housing. We can't just do transitional housing. We have to have a place for people to go. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kristin Perry. Let's move on to Corinne McIntosh-Sacco.
My name's Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist in private practice, and I'm a resident of District 7, represented by Councilmember Jennings. I support the sense of urgency and the desire to alleviate the suffering of those experiencing homelessness. However, it seems like this mayor is wanting to put a Band-Aid on the wound versus stopping the bleeding at its source. Now, I appreciate Mayor Steinberg's drive to pass this initiative that looks to create more than 5,000 safe camping spaces, tiny homes, converted motel rooms, and shelter beds as the city's quote-unquote "serious" response to the crisis of homelessness. The master siting plan, as it sits before you tonight, is performative at best. It's business-centered, politics-centered, and property-centered. It lacks the human-centredness this plan needs in order to be successful. I'm gravely concerned that those individuals who are supposed to be at the heart of this plan, our unhoused community members, have not been at the center of the, the planning. Human-centredness doesn't criminalize homelessness, nor does it require individuals to follow punitive measures in order to accept shelter. Human-centredness does not make at-risk and vulnerable individuals reliant upon already underfunded and defunct wraparound services. What would be human-centered? Prioritizing a commitment to affordable housing, prioritizing a commitment to healthcare access, prioritize access to mental health treatment, and fund these programs not just with one-time dollars, but include funding as an ongoing commitment. We need more tenant protections, mental health services, addiction services, and permanent supportive and/or affordable housing for everyone. While this current plan purports to do something, it fails to come close to what's needed to appropriately address our homelessness crisis. How did we get here? Sacramento needs to support its residents to stay in housing, and this can be done by prioritizing funding for those health and human services that have been underfunded-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Last but not least, fully fund the Department of Community Response so that it's set up-
Thank you for your comments.
...to do what it's being charged with and quit giving money to the police-
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kendra Noel Lewis. Kendra Noel Lewis.
And so this is on behalf of the Sacramento Housing Alliance. We commend the city of Sacramento for the vision and strategic leadership to create a master siting plan to assist our unhoused neighbors. The plan is comprehensive and is bold in working to include all our neighbors. While more work is needed to be done to ensure equitable, equitable support and engagement in, in all neighborhoods by the city, in really getting people off the streets, the city's approach should be and is a model for our entire region. We urge unanimous support for the plan by council and commitments to the following with some of our recommendations. One thing is to commit to significant funding, at least $100 million for affordable housing developments, including permanent supportive housing. We strongly support devoting resources for emergency sheltering options, including safe grounds, safe parking, tiny homes, and emergency shelters. However, we cannot end homelessness without investing in the development of new, safe, accessible, and affordable rental homes, including permanent supportive housing. While the master plan describes converting 750 rooms into at least six motels or hotels, we urge funding at least $100 million to provide the necessary gap financing for other affordable housing developments. The funding commitment for affordable rental housing must match the scope and scale of our current crisis, and the city must recognize ending homelessness must include significant and funding for affordable rental housing and permanent supportive housing in Sacramento. In addition, we urge for equitable implementation and review of the plan in solidarity with our partner organizations. At the SAC Regional Coalition to End Homelessness, we must have specific actions to ensure the needs of Black and Indigenous people of color who are disproportionately experiencing homelessness have specific action steps and policies our view through a racial equity lens. In addition, we need coordination with the implementation of the housing element to really push, push our actions to decriminalize being unhoused and using city resources to ensure individuals and families are placed in permanent supportive housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Vanessa Hernandez. Next speaker is Vanessa Hernandez. Vanessa Hernandez? Let's go down to Joe Smith with Loaves and Fishes.
Hi there, everybody. Joe Smith, advocacy director for Loaves and Fishes. We support the 2021 Master Sighting Plan, but I'd like to make the following comments. One, the plan, the community plan presented by advocates, asks that any plan put forward by the city address systemic racism. No equity statement or actions to address systemic racism can be found when the plan is presented. Two, the city plan talks about moving people through the temporary solutions and into permanent housing, yet the plan doesn't allude to where the housing will come from. Three, standing-up sites should happen as soon as possible, but realizing the size of the task, attention cannot be taken away from the Department of Community Response being the lead agency responding to calls for 311 or 911 regarding homelessness. Great strides have been made in moving away from police response to calls that do not involve a crime. We must invest appropriately to continue this most important work. Four, an ombudsman must be a part of this plan from the beginning. And lastly, personally, when I was homeless for five years, I would have gladly traded in my tent in District Six for a clean tent, a clean tent room that had sanitation services, food, and people who could help me get my life on track. As long as helping people remains the number-one goal of this plan, not just making homeless folks invisible, and as long as the plan does not lead to homelessness being criminalized, I will personally continue my support for the 2021 Master Siting Plan. Thanks to all of you and everyone in the community for your hard work.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jane.
Hi, my name is Jane McCauley. I'm a 30-year resident of District Two and a founding member of the D2 Leaders Group. I support the mayor's plan for scattered site. I support our councilman's site choices. As long as the unhoused are then obligated to accept services and housing, the mayor has requested twice that all districts contribute to providing shelter for these folks. D2 stood alone and stepped up the first time, and we are stepping up again. These 11,000 unhoused should be divided by city and county, and then divided by eight council districts. It is absolutely unfair and not helpful to have D2 bear the brunt of this crisis. Other districts and the county have to step up, or we should back down in District Two. D1, 7, 8, you guys go first, and then we'll step up. If the plan is to burden one community with tenement housing, cannabis homelessness, empty business corridors, and rising crime, sadly, that's where we are now. If this district steps up again, we respectfully ask that an exit strategy for each of the four sites is clear from the start. These cannot be permanent shelters. This community needs to recover. Our creeks, our rivers, our bike trails, the American River Parkway have to have time to recover. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Michael Malinowski.
Okay, good.
Mayor and council members, my comments are specific to the extreme concentration of shelters on one street. Today, you are considering a plan that will lay the foundation for a skid row that will bring new levels of human suffering in all dimensions to the entire X Street corridor. As the owner of two properties and a professional business on this corner, I can only at this time plead for reason to try to address the human crisis of homelessness by institutionalizing it on what seems to be a forgotten edge of our city, maybe based on compassion, but it portends tragedy. I can only plead that you reflect to bring logic and compassion full circle to include consideration of those who pay taxes, provide jobs, and follow rules of common decency and law, like citizens as myself, unfortunate enough to be located here essentially alone, as noted by other speakers, in facing this onslaught. You all know the definition of doing more and more of the same thing while expecting different outcomes. Please do not add more shelters to the already impacted X Street corridor. If you do go forward with this ill-considered plan, please at least give us a lifeline we can reach out to grab when we find ourselves drowning from adverse consequences of your actions today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Andrew Skansky. Scanchee?
Yes, good evening, mayor and city council. First, I wanted to note that late this afternoon, the city issued a revised environmental analysis, suggesting that this action is not a project under CECL because the approval is not binding and future CECL review will occur. That's nice, but it's inconsistent with what is in the resolution and not consistent with what the mayor has already said in this meeting, that this is a binding action. The plan will be automatically approved, will not require additional actions by the council, both the words from the mayor tonight. Under the factors in the Safe Care Decision, this is a project that requires full CECL review before approval. Further, none of the stated CECL exemptions apply, and there are potentially significant noise, air, safety, and aesthetic impacts. Second, I want to tell you about myself. I work full-time during the day, but I, as my night job, have worked to build more housing along the WX corridor. I'm not a developer, I'm a housing advocate. I do not have a development background, I do not have large financial funds to help me out, but I have helped bring more housing to Sacramento because I care about Sacramento. I care about this underserved corridor that has seen better days. While it took me the joys and challenges of being a parent, my wife and I have purchased a home fixed up and rented it out to a nice family along X Street. Since then, I've called together investors to buy a vacant surface parking lot next door that was covered in weeds and not been used for decades. Despite being a novice, I learned ins and outs of getting apartment buildings designed and built, and I leveraged everything I had to do it, and I have now provided an additional 41 units to Sacramento's housing stock. I'm currently working on another project next door, which again, require me leveraging everything to do. In short, I'm doing what I can to help the neighborhood, but it is unacceptable to put 800 additional beds under the WX freeway across from existing residents. It's not fair to the families in the buildings or the businesses that are local nearby that are struggling. Something needs to be done. It is unfair to have one-third of the new beds, approximately 1,500 people, under the WX corridor. It is not a situation I'm not wanting to help.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, I feel compassion for the unhoused, but I think that some sites are more appropriate than others, and WX has too many.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Daniel Savala.
Good evening, mayor and city council. You know, it's been a real pleasure over the last few weeks. Sorry, there's my time started. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Daniel Savala, Executive Director for the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership. You know, it's been really neat hearing everyone speak up. I think a lot of the other EBIT callers that called in, kind of, we deal with this on a day-to-day basis, whether it's keeping the Boulevard clean, dealing with the impacts of the unhoused. We view this as a clear strategy to help us clean up our neighborhood. The mayor said it best, let's get this done and let's clean up our streets. Talking to business owners and our board, we are 100% behind the idea of doing something. We want to thank Councilmember Laloie for his work, meeting with business owners and community folks. He has some comments that I like to say District Two is kind of rallied behind as far as what we expect as far as quality, and we're all in to help with the short-term solutions. But looking at long-term solutions, we want you to know that Del Paso Boulevard is ripe for housing. It's right close to downtown, it's littered with light rail stops and city-owned properties. We have a fabulous development project at 1210 Del Paso, the VOA, that is shovel-ready. Not only do we want to be part of the short-term solution, mayor, we want to be part of the long-term affordable housing solution for Sacramento. We want this council to get behind funding the VOA project on Del Paso Boulevard, which will be a catalyst for future developments on Del Paso Boulevard, and it will be a game-changer for the small business community here. Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, we look forward to working with you on the implementation side because tonight is just the beginning. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Orlando Redden.
All right, thank you. My name is Orlando Redden. I'm a resident of District Number Three. It's been a very educational presentation today on the proposal. I do live in a neighborhood that would be directly affected by the shelters, and based on the presentation, I'd like to start off with one of the quotes from the presenter, "Life and safety, get around it." Those were the exact words and the exact word that was stated. Based on the presentation, this attempts to remove all financial safety nets and restrictions to spend money as quickly as possible without having a complete plan or any oversight at all. The plan is to spend $100 million in two to three years with no plan on how to handle the continuing, ongoing cost of these programs beyond, we'll find the money, we've done it before, which is no plan at all because then if the money isn't there, the cost falls on the community, which has increased taxes as well. This implementation plan has nothing set in stone, not even what will be in the locations. From the presentations, anything may change at any point. Everything is up to the city to decide with no oversight, no city council vote beyond that. This is a reckless implementation that wants to remove all thought-out safety protocols and oversight. This is not a plan, but an idea or a dream, a good dream, a great dream to house and help the community, but it's not even a goal. It hasn't even thought out enough to have any milestones or benchmarks in it to show any point of success. The $100 million is not going to house the 9,000 people on a steady basis year after year. It's just going to be an additional cost, $100 million that could be spent better to help the actual core issue with homelessness instead of putting a Band-Aid on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Michelle.
Yes, thank you. My name's Michelle Johnston, and I'm a resident of District Four. I remember being at a conference over 20 years ago where the speaker talked about we weren't building enough new housing to keep up with the projected changes in California's population. This issue has been decades in the making, and while we cannot get everyone housed immediately, we must work with a plan and a sense of urgency. Our unhoused neighbors deserve nothing less. Many of them have experienced incredible trauma. Others may have just had one unfortunate experience that led them to not having a safe place to live. I've frankly been disappointed in comments made online by some in our community who have made very negative comments about other Sacramentoans and do not seem to understand the privileges that some of us have had that allow us to have a safe place to live. I greatly appreciate the work of my councilmember, Katie Valenzuela, Mayor Steinberg, and the other councilmembers and their staff in researching options and putting together this plan. People have mentioned additional issues tonight related to equity, long-term affordable housing, and decriminalization of being unhoused that obviously will need additional effort as well, but I'm very supportive of this thoughtful plan and encourage the council to pass the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Chet.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Chet Hewitt. I am the president/CEO of the Center for Sierra Health and a proud member of District Four, represented by Katie Valenzuela. I want to commend the ladies for demonstrating needed leadership and advancing a bold plan seeks to bypass the politics of NIMBYism and gridlock and treating the challenge of homelessness for what it is, a dire health and humanitarian crisis. I also want to employ the city staff and members of the community who participate in this effort for the steps being taken today in the form of a sighting plan. As a health-focused organization, we are proud to say that the plan has our full support. We encourage you to see the plan's inclusion of a large campus concept as well, which combines key service alongside housing for the chronically homeless. As the councilmembers know well, our collective ability to support populations experiencing homelessness remains a challenge beyond citing as Sacramento's capacity for inpatient care is limited and we have a fragmented delivery system. And here is where the bold plan needs more specifics and investment in services alongside its sighting and design accomplishment, that this is going to truly be an all-in effort. First, mental health and substance use disorder treatment, trauma remediation, workforce training, and domestic violence, along with medical care, must be integrated into the program with a plan for each site. This requires a deeper partnership with the county, which controls the funding for Bay Area Health and other needed services. It also requires a higher level of commitment by local Medicare managed care plans who enroll the unhoused and are paid to provide care for these individuals. Second, while we applaud the city council members who worked hard to find sites, the plan promised an equal distribution of sites across districts, but 75% of the sites are located in four of eight districts. We believe every district and community must share in this responsibility. Third, the council must stay engaged in the future development to ensure racial equity and transparency. Fourth, ongoing assessment and evaluation that provides some miscost corrections needs to be built into the plan, particularly to.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. And lastly, accomplishments cannot deter us in any way from aggressively pursuing affordable housing as a permanent solution.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Angela Hassel.
Hi, thank you. Angela Hassel, I'm the executive director of... Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. The executive director of Sacramento Loaves and Fishes, and on behalf of Loaves and Fishes, I want to congratulate Mayor Steinberg and the council on the construction of this plan and for all your efforts to engage and address homelessness in our city. For the past 38 years, Loaves and Fishes has evolved into a community of programs designed to intentionally address the survival needs of our guests. We've witnessed other concerted efforts to bring unhoused folks indoors, and we welcome this council's master plan as an opportunity for many of our unhoused neighbors to live in safer spaces where they can connect to much-needed resources and find their paths home. Loaves and Fishes is situated in District Three and is represented by Councilmember Harris. From the standpoint of our mission to serve folks where they are physically, emotionally, and mentally, we find the proposed sites in District Three to be a bit lacking in numbers of additional people served. While we recognize that District Three has many of our city's existing service providers, we also recognize that there are more people living unhoused in District Three than those programs and shelters can presently serve. Without providing safe spaces for those folks, we risk them overburdening the surrounding district's resources, or worse, remaining unserved and thus unhoused. We also want to note that the challenge of administering these sites will involve working to gain the trust of people experiencing homelessness. Many folks living unhoused have sustained compound and complex traumas that lead them to easily distrust new opportunities. For folks living moment to moment and struggling to find safety, plans often don't provide safety until they come to fruition, and with this, we recognize and validate that our unhoused community may have some very mixed feelings about this plan. We hope the work leading to this master plan helps inform upcoming meetings about the housing elements and results in development of more affordable housing and permanent supportive housing. The proposed six-month timeline for people to stay at the identified sites must lead to other permanent opportunities in order to remain effective and rehouse folks. We hope that the mayor and the council will continue to engage our community through the next phase of carrying out this plan.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Byron Maynard.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. I've lived in the Sacramento area over 35 years. I've owned and operated a business on Commerce Circle for 18 years in District Three, Jeff Harris's district. Enjoyed it there. It's been a great place until this last year. Over the last year, we've experienced 50 to 70 RVs camping on Commerce Circle and Lathrop Way. We've got generators running 24/7, fires on the American River Parkway, people dumping human waste in the storm drains, needles on the street and on the levee. Recently, we had a man with a machete walking down the street, had a man defecate in broad daylight on our fence in our main parking lot. Neighbor's landscaper got shot at with a pellet gun, and now we have the distinction of having a murder on our street. I see tremendous damage to our environment, and in California of all places, I thought we cared about the environment. The employees don't feel safe, customers don't feel safe. The police say it's a code enforcement issue. What you want to do here is fantastic. I applaud you, but there are some people who don't want help, and if they don't, are you going to enforce the law? As a business, I can't dump anything down the storm drain that I want. I can't park a trailer on the street, infan item, and not have it towed. Are we going to tow all of those campers out of there? Does the law only apply to employees and business owners? Hundreds of millions of dollars, and the problem is the worst I've ever seen it. I hear hurry, 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 but what kind of safeguards are in place to prevent fraud and abuse? I want this to make a difference. I don't want to see this opportunity squandered. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Rebecca Turnbaugh.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Turnbaugh, and I am the Assistant Director of Outreach at St. John's Lutheran Church in District Four. Lutheran Church in District Four. We have been doing ministry with our unhoused neighbors for decades now, and most recently, our facility was used as a safe ground triage shelter operated by first-step communities for the past two and a half months. I also participated in the District Four Task Force on Homelessness with Councilmember Valenzuela. We are supportive of this plan to address homelessness on a large scale in Sacramento as a first step. Thank you for your hard work. I would, however, echo many of the concerns already expressed by Sacramento Act members and other advocates. Homelessness is not a problem to be solved, but an outcome of the failure of other systems that are left untouched by this plan. Chief among these is the provision of accessible and affordable housing, particularly for low and no-income individuals. Having more shelter options that meet the various needs of individuals and that prioritizes their dignity is important and desperately needed. Respecting the right to self-determination of individuals is also important. As this plan is implemented and as we learn together how to do this work at this level, let us remember that the city has a lot of work to do to rebuild trust with unhoused residents. If people do not immediately respond in the ways that we hope, I urge the city to not fall back on tactics such as labeling people as service-resistant or criminalizing people who have layers of trauma from which they need to heal. Again, I thank you for your work and the opportunity to speak here.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Erica J.
Hi, thank you. I just want to say that I do support the master siding plan, but I do just want to emphasize that diverting investments in permanent affordable housing toward a mandate for shelter beds will lead us to repeat past mistakes. A former staff from the Philadelphia City Office of Homeless Services reported that their office estimated that for about $30 million yearly, they could effectively end street homelessness in Philadelphia, that some would encompass the local cost of permanent supportive housing for every chronically homeless person on the street and then some. And he also noted that it was a rather large overestimate. So I'm left to question, what if each one of our council members spent the last year choosing these sites to build affordable public-owned housing? This solution essentially that seems like you all are ignoring could effectively end chronic homelessness in Sacramento. Talk about a return on investment. Even better. But tonight, we're talking about quote-unquote "mustering" $100 million to invest in shelter and housing. I do just want to support and uplift Sacramento Homeless Union's request that the plan needs to include strategies for providing adequate numbers of affordable permanent supportive housing. Homelessness must be decriminalized and police management sweeps must stop. I also think it's really critical to share that most of these sites, there's no rules, there's no monitoring, and so people get cycled through and are being kicked out for reasons that they're not even aware of. And I think the focus needs to be on how to keep them there and build life skills like conflict resolution instead of just kicking them out because people aren't getting along. If it's a safety issue, that's one thing, but if it's because of he said, she said amongst the folks, then that's not okay. We need to focus on keeping people in the shelter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Raoul Horta Castro.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. I'm speaking on behalf of South Natomas United, the neighborhood association in the Gardenland Northgate area of South Natomas. We would like to express our disappointment and frustration at Councilmember Harris's lack of community outreach for his proposed sites for the master plan to address homelessness. Councilmember Harris continues to propose homeless shelters and facilities in the Gardenland Northgate area, which is identified as a low-resource area by the State of California, is low-income and largely minority. Specifically, Councilmember Harris has identified two sites in the Gardenland Northgate area. Both sites are off of Northgate Boulevard and less than five minutes from each other. We are especially concerned about the inclusion of the Large Wood Drive site as a priority site. This site is directly in front of Garden Valley Elementary School and adjacent to a residential neighborhood, a 300-plus unit affordable apartment complex, and a mobile home park. Councilmember Harris held one virtual community meeting with little attendance to discuss his proposal for the Large Wood Drive site, where several concerns were raised. Furthermore, Councilmember Harris accepted at the meeting that his office had not reached out to the Twin Rivers Unified School District to obtain their feedback, given the proximity and potential impact to the school. Yet, without further community input, he included the site as a priority site. Mayor Steinberg highlighted the outreach that was done for the development of this plan. This definitely did not happen for this Large Wood Drive site. We urge the council to remove the Large Wood Drive site from the identified locations for the master plan and to look at the equity issues being raised by the sites that are being proposed. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Gloria Manis.
Good evening, everyone. My concerns are that there are no sites in Rick Jennings' neighborhood or no sites in Land Park, and I'm glad that North Natomas has finally stepped up. I'm also concerned that there are a number of sites in South Sacramento. You've got a proposed site right next to an existing shelter, recently-built shelter facility. How can that be? That's across and near a charter school, near a church. Why does the South Sacramento area get impacted so much? You've got two on Florin Road, then you've got one on La Mancha. All of these things say to Sacramento, why are you dumping everything in our area? I do not like this. I understand that we've got a lot of area here, but it's not fair. Okay? I understand people need to be housed, but once again, the issue is, where do these people go once they leave these shelters? Per the newspaper article, the city's Meadowview Shelter has moved just, just 39 people into permanent housing out of 257 who have spent time there. Where would these other people go when they leave the shelter? There are no permanent housings there for them to go to. I think that in addition to that, you indicated in this newspaper article that the RT didn't approve a shelter down there at the Florin Roads place. However, the parking lot is packed with building equipment ready to go at a moment's notice. How can this be? I think we're jumping ahead of ourselves because we do need to have housing once these people leave these shelters. You're getting them in, but what are you going to do when they leave? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is PJ.
Yeah, PJ, District Four. For one, I wholeheartedly agree with SAC Act and Joe. It's also frustrating that you claim to want to move fast and yet aren't voting. It seems counterintuitive. I appreciate what this is and understand what it isn't. There shouldn't be a punishment portion of this. If people aren't accepting housing, you've done something wrong, not them. Every story I've heard from an unhoused person is how the government has failed to follow through on supportive services, on consistent housing, on allowing for them to participate as full autonomous human beings, and being locked in gated communities isn't autonomy. So maybe instead of punishing them, you should punish yourselves and look harder at what you may have done to make them refuse housing. Additionally, I'm unhappy with the lack of sites in a number of districts. I see you, Jeff Harris. I see your lack of outreach to unhoused individuals or the orgs helping them. People become unhoused in the areas that they previously lived by and large. They want to stay in those areas because they're familiar with those areas, and service providers need a way to adequately contact folks who need services. You do them a disservice by trying to pretend they don't exist in your district in the first place or not give them adequate means to be reached by service providers by providing actual housing. It looks like the areas that have always been the most impacted by discrimination, unemployment, and low wages are having to bear the brunt of this because their populations don't have the money or time, as the rich do, to keep this housing out of their neighborhoods. It's racist and classist to act like they should continue to bear the brunt in their neighborhoods when unhoused individuals live across the city and deserve to stay in their neighborhoods rather than expecting them to move to other districts where clearly some council members' proposals are more robust. Lastly, alternatives to 911s need to be a model when addressing any issues, especially surrounding mental health. Cops have shown they are willing to go above and beyond in killing the mentally ill. Some of our most vulnerable members of society are met with violence by those untrained and unwilling to listen to guidance from those with the knowledge on helping those with mental illness. Mental health professionals need to always respond. They are competent and can make the call if it's a situation they can't handle and need backup. I expect more from adults claiming to want to address homelessness. I expect more from the task force chair. Someone who laws his ability to form consensus through deal-making seems okay with several of these members failing to meet the challenge. Do better.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Final is, community will track the progress of this and trumpet every time the city fails and tries to blame-
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Cecilia Flores.
Mayor Steinberg and city council members, my name is Cecilia Flores and I'm with Sacramento Act. As mentioned by previous SAC Act callers, we support the approval of the Tier One sites listed in the master siding plan and look forward to seeing more Tier Two sites very soon. However, we do have some reservations about other aspects of the proposed plan, which were highlighted in our letter sent to the council and mentioned by other SAC Act callers tonight. We specifically would ask that you commit to addressing the following issues. First, the plan is proposed last significant sites in three council districts and continues the pattern of planning services for the unhoused and low-income communities of color that are already underserved and in need of resources. We urge you to adopt a fair and equitable plan by identifying and approving sites spread throughout all districts as part of the Tier Two site selection process. Second, the plan does not address how behavioral health and substance abuse services are to be provided to residents of the various temporary housing communities envisioned. These services are critical and this gap in the plan must be addressed. The county has its own ARP funds of $301 million, and its community survey found that homelessness and housing to be by far the largest expenditure preference of the community. So any successful plan must identify the county's involvement in the provision of such services throughout the county. Third, funding of the Tier One sites that support permanent supportive housing should be accelerated. And fourth, during the transition period, all unauthorized campgrounds in the city should be free from police sweeps and be provided with basic water, sanitation, and trash pickup services. Being unhoused is not a crime and should not be treated as such through police enforcement. We appreciate the leadership of the mayor and the council on this plan and look forward to seeing how it continues to evolve to better serve our unhoused community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dominic Gutierrez.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hello? Okay, great. Okay, so I've lived in Midtown, then East SAC, and now the Alhambra Triangle. I don't support this response, but the only time I've seen police respond to houseless people is during my time living in East SAC. Anytime an unhoused person would wander into the area, a fleet of cops would roll up as if there'd just been a murder and remove them. It is clear SAC PD has an unofficial policy to relocate houseless folks out of East SAC and I suspect also out of Land Park. Looking at the proposed map, I see there are no sites in East SAC or Land Park. It is time that Sacramento's wealthy bear their fair share of the burden of our inhuman housing disaster. I support this plan under the condition that this unofficial city police policy be ended and that the shelters in East SAC and Land Park be created. If there aren't sites available, then use eminent domain and make one. We also need to give up on the slew of vanity projects for the rail yards and build permanent free and low-cost housing for at least 15,000 people on the rail yard site. On a separate note, the entirety of the city needs more permanent public restrooms so we no longer see small feces and urine everywhere in the city. Lastly, avoiding public scrutiny needs to end. All city council meetings should be held at 6:00 PM or later. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Alexis Y. Garcia.
Good evening, everyone. I grew up in Sacramento and I am now a resident of District Six in Tallick Village in Tahoe Park. And this meeting and the meeting we attended for District Six last night have both been extremely frustrating. I've heard a lot about how hard everyone has worked on this project, and I agree that there is a lot of work clearly reflected in this draft proposal. But there is also a lot that is critically missing. You tout the many meetings that took place around this proposal, and as far as I can tell, all of those meetings, in my district at least, took place in the spring, when the council admitted that these sites were in early approval stages. There have been no meetings since then where the council might have explained which sites had been narrowed down and which sites were in the likely running to be included in the final proposal. When people say that they were not informed, that is what we are referring to. This final proposal is dated August 4th, and now you're set to vote on August 10th. That is barely a week's notice. To pretend that this is sufficient community outreach is laughable. It's one thing to be informed of 24 potential sites across a far-spread district. It's entirely another to learn with no interim discussion or opportunity for input that one of three final sites is going to be blocks away from your home. Worse, rather than saying yes, we acknowledge there are still unanswered questions in this draft and we look forward to discussing them again as needed in order to approve the actual developments, Mayor Steinberg spent 20 minutes explaining that no additional approvals will be required and that with this vote, the city plans just to start moving forward as it sees fit. When the city is moving forward and the community objects, what will our options be if no other approvals are built into the plan? Will we be railroaded again as we are now with empty assurances that we had plenty of opportunities to provide input? I urge you at least to reconsider the approval processes here so that community input can be incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Robert Thomas. Robert Thomas, will you unmute?
Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council, I'm Mr. City Manager. I'm Robert Thomas. I retired as the city manager of Sacramento and also served as the county exec. In the history of the city, I cannot remember any previous council that dealt with three crises at once. The coronavirus, the decline in the economy, and homelessness. I want to congratulate the mayor and city council for dealing with these in an effective manner in a very difficult time. The plan before you has been well thought out and absolutely necessary, as homelessness not only affects those without homes, our neighbors, but it affects every person and every visitor that comes to the city of Sacramento. I also want to thank the County of Sacramento and the Board of Supervisors for working closely with the city as this homeless issue is a county-wide issue. It is important that we adopt Phase One. It's not the final step. We need to work on affordable housing and job training. I strongly support the adoption of this plan, and I hope and ensure that the execution of the plan is well done. Also, I want to take a short comment about ULI, who has come out with an excellent plan that is not only attractive but functional. They did this on their own time as volunteers. They are members of our community, and they ought to be recognized for contributing to the solutions towards homelessness. I thank you and I urge your support of this very bold and important measure to deal with the current third crisis that we see every day. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is a phone number, last four digits, 9405. Phone caller, last four digits, 9405, please unmute.
Good evening. This is Adrianne Shilton. I am a District Four resident. I wanted to voice my strong support for the master plan to address the homelessness crisis in our city. The plan has the potential to do what we have never done, which is consider every voluntary option for our unhoused neighbors, starting with safe grounds. This vision is to be commended. As the Sacramento Bee editorial board aptly pointed out in their August 9th piece, every neighborhood has been impacted by homelessness, and so every neighborhood has to be part of the solution, every district. What the Bee editorial also pointed out, however, is that the master plan still contains inequities across the region. It does not reflect every community stepping up to be part of the solution. There are missed opportunities. I am so proud to support Councilmember Valenzuela's proposals to support the master plan, which considers all types of housing, from safe ground to motels to tiny homes and single-family and supportive housing. This is the kind of leadership we need from every member of this council if we are to meet the laudable goals of this plan. As a District Four resident, I am proud that my neighborhood has safe grounds and integrates those and other options into the neighborhood. The master plan is a significant step. Let's not resort to the same proposals that tinker on the edges of the problem, place the homeless on the outskirts of town, or prioritize certain populations over others. Those don't represent comprehensive solutions. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Gordon.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to begin by reading from a study from the Furman Center for Real Estate and Urban Policy from a New York University School of Law in coordination with the Wagner School of Public Service, written in 2008 by a law professor of public policy, urban planning professor and an economist who worked for the U.S. Department of the Treasury. Their findings were that houses closest to developments bore the brunt of property value decreases. Let me find the exact point. I have had several conversations with my District Six representative where he continually assured me that due to hearing from a former president of the Sacramento Real Estate Association, that there would be no property value decrease. What I find when I look at the research is quite different. In the 500 to 1,000 foot range, this is directly from their paper, we find a different story. Average properties located 500 to 1,000 feet from supportive housing experience is an immediate drop in value compared to prices more than 1,000 feet from the development, but within the same census tract of approximately 5% following the construction of supportive housing. Relative prices drop even further when the supportive housing opens two years later. What this equates to is a special tax on those of us who have bought homes in the areas that these supportive housing developments will be put up. I think that it can easily be understood that you can be both in support of finding housing for people who are unhoused and have empathy for their plight while at the same time not wanting to take a 5% hit to your most valuable asset. As we were not very informed or asked to put input into this plan, it seems very unfair that these developments are cited within certain districts and not cited without in other districts at all. I don't understand how we can be specially taxed for a problem that affects the whole city without any sort of way to.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I agree with everyone who thinks that this is a bad idea.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Nikki Jones. Nikki Jones?
Yeah, hey. Good, good morning, everybody. My name's Nikki. I live in District Five, but I've also, I'm a part of the Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee, the Sacramento Services Not Sweeps Coalition, Mental Health First, Decarcerate Sacramento, kind of a lot of groups, you know, founding members of a lot of those groups except shock that's been around since before I was born. But, you know, these, this plan lacks a few major things that we really need the city to focus on and consider to slow down to think about, namely systemic racism. I literally have not heard from any of y'all's mouths how you plan to use this, as people have said, unprecedented amount of money and, and planning and vision to address the issue that we really know is at hand, which is like a very disproportionate impact on access to housing. And, you know, we really can't, we can't, without ongoing, not just affordable, but housing is a human right. We need, if we don't have that, we don't have this. We're not going to have this unless you slow down, you check in with people who are living outside about what they actually need, which I assure you is not just another tent that you control instead of them. They need, if they're outside, they need supportive services like hygiene, sanitation, trash. If they are in your supportive services, they need real pathways out and you are not offering that at this time. And you're not offering any, any, any ongoing community engagement about how this is going to go. And I think that's A, number one, particularly with people who live outside, whose lives, and all day long it affects. It doesn't, it doesn't just affect what they think about their business impact. And I know it's my.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Oh, it's almost as if you didn't hear mine, but.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Maria Elena.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Yes, good evening. I'm calling in on behalf of Padres Organized Community and I would like to first of all state that this problem has been saying that it's going to be addressed for over two decades now. And in that time, this city has approved cat shelters for feral cats and a brand new arena for the Sacramento Kings. Now, on to the city manager being in charge of all the funding. I find that, we find that to be very concerning considering on June 18th, the city manager has been documented to be hostile towards unhoused individuals as well as one of the council members. We also are concerned that religious and other organizations with histories of abusive and exploitative practices are going to continue to prey upon our most vulnerable community groups. We also are concerned because we have heard of lack of inclusion of the community in at least four districts and the council members have failed to follow up with those concerns. There also seems to be a lack of accountability. In addition to that, we are asking that you not continue to criminalize those who are unhoused. We know that some members have been targeted and with regards to the two, District Two and District Six, we feel that District Six experiences the brunt of everything from both the city and the county and District Two just does a lot of complaining. Thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Amanda Blackwood.
Hello, Honorable Mayor Steinberg, council members and staff. I'm Amanda Blackwood, President and CEO of the Sacramento Metro Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to express our strong support for the master siding plan to address homelessness. By approving this plan tonight, you are embracing your roles as leaders to address this crisis head on and demonstrate what a world-class city is capable of when we work together to solve the most challenging problems. The timing of this momentous decision could not be more urgent. Homelessness in the Sacramento region has grown exponentially, causing devastating impacts on our unhoused population as well as our neighborhoods and business districts. Additionally, funding for this work is available now. If we do not act decisively and with intention, this once in a lifetime opportunity will be lost. Coupled with the ongoing pandemic, the lack of available space and support for the homeless community has created an environment in which business and our workforce are left to navigate the reality of untreated mental illness, theft, damage, drug use and human waste outside of their storefronts on a daily basis. And while the economic impacts are enormous, most importantly, our unhoused neighbors are experiencing this reality as well. It is simply unacceptable that in our state's capital city, a city capable of unlimited greatness, we would stand by and watch those in need suffer inhumane conditions that serve to only increase the trauma they are experiencing. It is wrong and the time is now to stand together and start the healing process for us all. But this is just the first step. A comprehensive regional solution is needed to address the challenges in a sustainable and equitable way. We must move swiftly to get these sites fully operational with the necessary support services while thoroughly embracing good neighbor policies to mitigate the impacts on neighborhoods. Accountability for all parties is paramount and regulation of behavior will be essential to keep everyone safe and if done right, create pathways for our homeless to live happy, healthy lives. It won't be easy, but nothing worth doing ever is. The moment is now to decide who we are as a community. We are here to stand in support of this comprehensive solution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is GNNA Board. It appears they've hung up. Next speaker is phone number with the last four digits, eight, two, zero, zero. Phone number with last four digits, eight, two, zero, zero. Will you unmute? Next speaker is Willie.
Hi, this is Nikki.
Thank you, please proceed.
Hi, this is, hi, this is Nikki Pascal in Council District Four. I want to thank the council for bringing forward this very exciting plan and I'm very hopeful it will finally be the turning point our city needs. It's long past time to bring dignity and respect to people without homes in our community. As a resident of Midtown, I particularly want to thank my council member Katie Valenzuela for leading on the comprehensive solutions needed to address the scale of this crisis. And I do have to say I'm disappointed that every district did not come forward with the same commitment. It seems that some parts of our city don't see themselves as part of the solution or want to serve only the most politically expedient populations. And unfortunately, that approach will only deepen existing inequities and leave racist structures in place. So I want to be clear, there's a demand for every part of our city to step forward to ensure that no person is unserved who wants to be served. On that note, research from leading experts shows that when safe and welcoming housing is available, more than 90% of people will willingly come inside. And so I believe this plan will bear that out and there should be no need to take a punitive enforcement approach. Again, I hope this plan will be the first step in really turning around this crisis in our city. And thank you to the council and particularly Katie Valenzuela. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Willie Mincy.
Mayor, Councilman, I'd like to have my comments directed toward District Two and primarily starting with the Colback site. You know, that is a site, you know, not against it, but factual. What it really illustrates is that District Two has a tremendous groundwater cleanup problem. But anyway, District Two currently, last time I checked, has a, is a, is a, 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 restricting residents of human habitation on that particular site. And I looked on the website and it's still there. Anyway, that's my first point. In regard to the Lexington Dix, Dixyan site, you know, that site is part of Swanson Station. You know, it's a trans, trans village that the city initiated in 2007. And it probably was the same time they bought this particular site. But let me tell you, this is a site that is, within a quarter mile, had seven groundwater contamination problems. They, they're all cleaned up and I think there's maybe two. And what, and basically the last one, 1031 Arden Way, is going to be the catalyst site for that whole transit system. Millions of dollars have been spent on cleaning up. And, and I'm saying here that we in this area are tremendously burdened by this like no other district. And I, and, and so I think that needs to be taken into consideration in regard to that site because it's something the city could do in regard to helping all this. Is, the city has a ground, one twelve and that well has taken, because it's, you know, whether you're going to use it or keep it, but all these sites have to address the fact that they're 100 feet within a operating active groundwater. Anyway, that's my thought and I would like the council to do whatever they can to help District Two. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Zeus Mendoza.
Can you hear me?
We can, please proceed.
Okay, good evening. My name is Mario Gutierrez. I am a minority homeowner in District Six and a first time speaker at a city council meeting. I have some concerns about the locations of proposed sites and the plan in general. During site location scouting, community residents were not consulted and have not consented to these proposals. Site locations fit into a larger historic pattern that places undue burdens on minority residents and homeowners while passing over wider and more affluent neighborhoods, including Land Park, East Sacramento, The Pocket and the grid north of Broadway. By not allowing a referendum on sites in the communities that will be directly affected by them, it denies us our agency and dignity. The plan does nothing to guarantee permanent quality housing to the homeless population or to address the larger affordable housing crisis that increasingly affects the working and middle classes by pushing more households to and past the brink of homelessness. I ask that the city council take the time to consult their constituents in identifying sites and allow a democratic vote via ballot on each proposed site within their respective districts. Community trust in this project requires community input and parity in respect to the demographics of where the sites are located. The first good neighbor policy is outreach. Please listen to the people and vote no on this nominal master plan so that it can be redrafted to provide long-term affordable housing for those who are currently homeless and those who will face homelessness in the future. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Natalie Ramos.
This is actually your husband, Michael. I'm a member of the Park Bridge Community in Natomas District Three. I have an issue with sites three A and three B as they're a beeline walking distance from our new community. We were not consulted in the implementation of these sites. As the previous speaker said, there was no community outreach. In the short time our community has been here, we have already experienced numerous crimes committed by the homeless in the area. To have a shelter within our community that brings in even more homeless only threatens our safety and property values. To those saying we should be embracing these shelters as part of our community, I ask, do you have a shelter in your community? Do you have a proposed shelter in your neighborhood? How many of you city council members have a shelter in your neighborhood? Mr. Mayor, do you have a shelter in your neighborhood? If the leadership of this city isn't willing to have shelters in their neighborhood, then why is it a pill that we should not just swallow but embrace? This is not acceptable. Our community should not be shamed because we want a safe community and strong property values. We don't want hypodermic needles and broken glass on our walking trails that are a stone's throw away from the proposed sites. We don't want to be afraid to have our children playing outside. We don't want our cars vandalized and broken into. We don't want sites three A and three B to go forward. Additionally, I don't understand why we're paying for dog parks, pools and basketball courts for these shelters. The homeless need help fighting addiction, finding employment and finding permanent housing. They don't need a vacation resort. This is more luxury than can be reasonably justified to solve the problem in our homelessness, which is food, water, shelter and mental health support. Stop using our tax dollars to bludgeon the taxpayers. If you really support this program, then lead by example and put the shelters in the neighborhoods of the city's leadership first and then you can preach to the rest of us how good it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Anthony Rios.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Next speaker is Anthony Rios.
Can you hear me?
We can, please proceed.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Between me and my wife, we have spent almost 20 years in the military. After coming back from overseas about two years ago, we were lucky enough to purchase our first home, a brand new home here in Natomas in District Three. Our plan was to raise our boys here in a safe neighborhood. However, now for the first time I'm hearing about this quote unquote master plan, even though we heard earlier that everyone should be aware and the residents around my area were not made aware. If I was made aware of this at any time, I would have probably sold my house by now. Myself and my neighbors do not want homeless in our neighborhood. We have already dealt with homeless here and I'm sorry to tell you, but they are not good for the neighborhood. Stealing from our homes, damaging our property, trash around the neighborhood as well. I do not agree with this. I do not want them in my neighborhood and neither do none of my neighbors. This is a horrible plan by the mayor and the city council to spend money. Although I do have compassion and empathy that does not come before the safety of my family and my neighbors.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mark Schultz.
Quick sound check, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please proceed.
Hey, thanks, everyone. If you're still hanging out after all these hours of public comment, mayor, council, thank you for all your hard work and effort on this issue. I would like to say that I am neutral on this plan because I don't know what's in it. The details are really in the implementation and that's my single point I'm going to make tonight. I don't have comments highly prepared or rehearsed, so it's just extra, and he is speaking here and I'll just tell you that my one point is let's get the public involved in this process of the planning of implementation. What you've got here is a very bold plan, but it's very weak on details. And the action that you're requesting the council to take tonight is indeed aggressive. In fact, you've acknowledged it's the most aggressive plan in Sacramento history and I would agree with that. But if you're going to be aggressive, then you need to be considering the, what the implications are in public input and you should not be bypassing public process and environmental law and everything else that you're doing along the way here. You're basically trying to work around everything except life safety. Well, you know, this meeting had no special notice that was, made it legal for a regular meeting. This plan's only been up on the website for less than a week and it's not even on the master site planning website for the city for crying out loud. You haven't posted the plan on a website where it should be. It's very aggressive to declare a $100 million project exempt from, because of an emergency action. You know, that's not going to hold up in court, give us all a break. It's aggressive for having no cost estimate. What plan wouldn't have a cost estimate? It's aggressive to open up your city manager's contracting authority to unlimited amounts. It's aggressive to open up your city manager's contracting authority to unlimited amounts from two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to unlimited amounts. It's aggressive to spend fifty-thousand dollars for each homeless shelter? Come on. It's a common theme here. Let's stop railroading. Let's get the public involved, and slow this down, and, and, and think it through better than this. I'm not against it.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I'll repeat my final comment. I'm not against this. We have to do something. But this is no way to do business. Let's get your act together and do it.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Greta Lason.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, Mr. City Manager, and council members. My name is Greta Lason, and I am president of the River District Board in District Three. Mayor Steinberg, I have watched you work toward your goal of bringing every unhoused person indoors, and I strongly support your efforts, recognizing that only with fair share among all council districts and with the full participation of Sacramento County can this be a success. For the last thirty years, the River District and District Three has supported the vast majority of homeless and social services for the entire region. Anyone who claims that Councilmember Harris and the River District have not done enough needs to educate themselves to the reality. Councilmember Harris has worked tirelessly to find solutions, but he can't do it alone, and nor should he. We have done far more than any other district, and now is a time for other council members to step up. People should not be living in the streets of our city in squalor or in the doorways of our business. And people should not be living on the American River Parkway. The riverbanks are not safe. People are raped, murdered, and victimized. Maintaining people there in survival mode is not kind, and it's not safe, and it's terrible for the river and the river habitat, which is simply being destroyed by tons of trash and fires that endanger everyone in the city. The River District has done far more than its fair share for years. The need is great. So we are excited for the city council and the county to step up, as you know you should, as you must. So vote tonight. Vote yes. The real work is ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Mario Guerrero.
Good evening. My name is Mario Guerrero, and I'm a resident of District Three, Councilmember Harris. First, as president of Stonewall Democrats, I want to thank the mayor for coming to speak to our members about the plan to house the unhoused. As an individual, my comments are as follows. While no plan will be perfect, this is a serious response to help the unhoused, and the mayor and council should be praised for it. Of course, there's been a lot of really good feedback, and I hope that the mayor and council will take some of this feedback into consideration and the plan refined. I also heard one item that struck a chord with me. I'm a resident of East Sacramento, and I, as an individual, would welcome, you know, looking at a potential site in East Sacramento, also in Land Park. These areas that are a little bit more well-to-do should do our, should do our part. The last comment I would add is, like many of the callers before, I hope that we can find a permanent funding source. I'm okay with something as simple, well, not as simple, with something as similar to a progressive tax to pay for it if needed. But we do need a permanent funding source to ensure that whatever gains we achieve through this plan, this aggressive plan, that we can ensure that it's long-term. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Carmela Castanillo Garcia. Carmela Cast-
Oh, hello? Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Thank you. I'm Carmela Castanillo Garcia. Came to Sacramento twenty-four years ago to be the CEO of the California Primary Care Association. But for seventeen years, I've been on the boulevard as an owner of three commercial properties, along with my husband, Angel Garcia, ten nineteen, ten twenty-three, and ten twenty-nine Del Paso Boulevard. And during this time, we have been waiting and waiting to see a bigger, firmer commitment to long-term affordable housing in this neighborhood. We agree with the testimony, and that's my husband and I, Angel Garcia, of Daniel Zavala with the Partnership for Del Paso Boulevard, talking about the shovel-ready products that have been in place, that are there, that have been there in the past, that haven't gotten the investment from the city. We need an investment in Del Paso Boulevard, along with this short-term solutions. And we're pleased to see that there's major efforts, and we commend the governor and the city council for making these efforts to serve the homeless. But our district, who has stepped up and really played a major role in supporting this community, has not had the investment of the city. We've been looking at an empty lot across from our lots for seventeen years, wanting to see affordable housing for two decades. So we will continue, as business owners, to want to invest in making Del Paso Boulevard a better place, bringing nonprofits to provide services to the community into our buildings. We're pleased to do that. We would love to see this city and its leadership invest back in this community, invest back in the businesses by providing, investing city dollars in shovel-ready products. Let's do the Del Paso projects that are ready now and have long-term solutions, not just short-term. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kristen Perry.
Hello, I'm here. I think you can hear me, right?
Yes, please proceed.
Hey, girl. Thanks for the second chance. I'm usually pretty tech savvy. Hello, Mayor Steinberg, and city council members. I know it's been a long time. I just want to get rid of the topic I've been engaged for the last few years. I am a resident of integrated tiny houses and shelters. I think they are a great way to integrate into the community and benefit everybody. I have three main things, though. People, accountability, and I, I think these things are really on my mind. I know you are. But District Two and what we've been through with railroad, as much as you've, you know, said things about it, a lot of the things I've experienced myself, they were problematic for the neighborhood. And also, Project Room, which is a very problematic, still trusts in this community in District Two. We, we need the investment. And, you know, when it comes to all these other proposed shelters, I, I just wish the best and hope you've learned from your past experiences. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Amber Selmer.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, council members. At first, I'm Amber Selmer. I am the executive director for HomeAid Sacramento. I want to express my sincere gratitude for your dedication and commitment to address homelessness on a macro level in our great city. As the charitable arm of the North State BIA, we are uniquely positioned with great access to builders and trade partners for much to carry out our mission to build new lives for Sacramento's homeless through housing and community outreach. Our primary role is to build facilities for organizations that serve temporary homeless, thus enabling them to expand their capacity for serving clients. Today, on behalf of HomeAid Sacramento, we want to pledge our commitment to help your efforts in any way that we can as it pertains to creating dignified housing for the homeless, and we look forward to being a part of future conversations. Finally, I want to express a personal message of gratitude. Having stood in lines at shelters and food banks with my mother and siblings as a child, shuffled from foster care placements, emergency shelters, protective services, and even nights in cars, I represent the many of our homeless population in Sacramento who are merely a chance away from becoming active participants in our city, as opposed to recipients of social services and in the adult system of care. The outcomes of your and our efforts collectively will be life-changing and have long-term impact on our community at large. As the new executor, excuse me, as the new executive director of HomeAid Sacramento, I could not be more excited to work tirelessly toward making a difference in the lives of those in need in the Sacramento region. I thank you for your time, and just quickly to address some of the comments that were made, as I want to make it, I want to make the point that homelessness does not always look like hypodermic needles or theft or crime. Homelessness looks, at times, like children who, for no other reason but that the adults in their lives let them down, or perhaps there was a life-changing event that altered their, their way of living. Homelessness does not always look like that, and so I hope that-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please? Thank you. Next speakers are Wake. Are Wake?
Yes. Yeah, can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Okay. Yeah, Richard Wake, City Council, District Five. I want to just say a few words to the people that called in tonight and expressed concerns about shelters going in their neighborhood. You know, I've been keeping an eye on this issue for five years now. I've donated and raised a lot of money for homeless youth in Sacramento. And one of the things that's happened here is I can't count the times that I've been to city council meetings or neighborhood town hall meetings. And, and, you know, have seen, have seen this, yeah, have seen this, this can get continually kicked down the road. And, you know, it just seems kind of frustrating that, yeah, it just seems kind of frustrating that, you know, all the city council meetings I've been to where reasonable proposals have been proposed. Unlike at one time, one of the homeless advocates gave the city council a complete list of every vacant property within every zip code in Sacramento with a company that built tiny homes for five thousand dollars, and that was three and a half years ago. Councilmember Warren came up with a fleetly, with a completely decent safe ground camping plan that was blown up, is unreasonable and not well-planned. So to all of those people that are complaining about the shelters, you know, going up in their neighborhoods, and unfortunately, now there's no time to waste, take a look at the six long-term incumbents that are sitting on the city council, minus the three new people, Councilmember Lowely, Councilmember Wang and Valenzuela, who are new to the council, and especially due to the fact that Councilmember Hanson left the city council like a big crybaby and didn't give Councilmember Valenzuela any information about what was going on in the district that she was hering. Take a look at the problem. The problem lies with the, with the six long-term incumbents on the city council that sat on their hands and did absolutely nothing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Zoom User.
Hi, my name is Michael. I live in District Four in Southside Park. I am probably the closest home to the, the park, or the safe ground in Southside Park. And since it's come in, I have experienced numerous problems. Not necessarily with the safe ground itself, though I, I question the tracking of the problems it has caused. It's the camps around it, which I am continually told are not the city's problem. On June twelfth, a person walked into my home, let a friend of, a friend's dog, who had been babysitting, out, and was gesturing towards my two-year-old, at the time, daughter and, and my dog, trying to get them to follow him. The, Katie's office had a lot of platitudes, a lot of empathy, but the police told me that there was ultimately nothing they could do. I have been reaching out to Katie's office since then with pretty much nothing to show for it. They have spoken to me many times. They've been able to give me no information to the questions I had. They have not responded substantively to any of the videos I've provided of, I can't say that's legal activity, but it did look like it. I just don't trust the city to protect the people around those camps.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Elaine.
Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Yes, hi. My name is Elaine Jackson. I've lived in the city for, I mean, I was born in Sacramento. My mother was born in Sacramento. I've seen it grow and evolve for a long time. I now currently live in District Two, and my concern definitely is that District Two is going to take the brunt of this. And it's not only the places of the shelters. It also is, one neighborhood has three low-income housing developments, four and five stories right now in projects coming to the area. Now, I, when you're surrounding a whole neighborhood like that, it is definitely unfair. I hear a lot of people complaining about their neighborhoods. But our little neighborhood here has had, on one end, a shelter with two hundred people temporary. On the other end, now there's a proposal to move that. The temporary shelter is closed, but they have another proposal, plus three large, large housing projects, and not only that, a shelter a half a mile from my home. Now, why is it that District Two is having all of this put upon them? The woman on Del Paso Boulevard saying that they want more affordable housing. You, you are supposed to disperse housing. You should have single-family homes. You should have condos. You should have multifamily dwellings that are market rate. You should have affordable housing. Not all of it in one location. I don't know how anybody can say that's okay. I'm listening to the other people there thinking that are complaining about their neighborhoods, and I'm wondering how, they don't even know what's going to happen here in this neighborhood. I, I am very upset because I'm gonna move, but that's not the reason I'm moving. I'm moving to The Pocket. And the mayor, I want to know why more isn't done. And also, commercial areas is where the shelter should be.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. Commercial areas is where you should build shelters. You will get a lot of less pushback.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Gordon Liu.
Hi. I, this plan is a burden on District Two. I'm a homeowner in District Two, and I've lived here for ten years. This area seems like we're, we get the brunt of all the, the downtrodden, and we help a lot of people, but it's like, when do we ever get our break? We have, we need some equity on sites, and this, this plan doesn't have any equity. There's three sites that are located in one neighborhood in North Sacramento. Only one site was talked about during site selection. The other sites were brung up originally, and then they were dismissed, and we were told they were not planned. And at the last minute, these other pla, others popped back up again. Roosevelt Road was the only, RT site was the only one that was talked about. Once again, we in the district will step up to house the homeless, and we all need districts to contribute meaningfully and in number of homeless served in not just locations. I feel like this is a rushed plan to spend money without a permanent funding source. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Teresa McConnell.
Yes. Hi, I'm, I'm a resident of District Two. I, my concerns with this plan is I don't see how it's addressing the individuals that don't want to be housed. I hear the previous callers talk about, you know, the homeless doesn't always look like hypodermic needles. It, it doesn't always look like, you know, women and children kicked out of a overpriced rental either. I was homeless at one point in my life. I know what that looks like. I had to live out of my car. And it was, it was everything I could do to get out of it. Unfortunately, I'd say close to half right now are comfortable where they are. You look at Roosevelt Road, you got a cartel going on over there. There's issues. I mean, you got drug lords charging rent for a homeless camp. Come on, man. How are you gonna enforce them moving out of those sites? If we put in these homeless camps and we have services, which I believe is the only way it can be done, people, these people, you know, anybody that's down that, at that point, they need services to get back up on their feet again. I completely agree. I have a lot of empathy for that. But we are not addressing what's gonna happen, the people that do not want to get into rehab, do not want to get out, do not want to go into a site that controls when they can come in, when they can go out, who they can have there. There is a huge issue coming up if we don't address that. If we don't allow there to be some authority of how that gets handled. People think that they're taking care of ninety percent of the homeless population. They're dreaming. It's not gonna happen. For those that it's gonna help and get reestablished, that's where- For those that it's going to help and get reestablished, that's where, that's where it makes it worth it. Because I do believe in helping those that want to help themselves. But what happens to those people that don't want to help themselves?
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is GNNA Board.
I just wanted to say my last statement.
Our next speaker is GNNA Board. GNNA Board, will you unmute?
Yes, this is Marbella Sala, and I've been a Northgate resident for 33 years. A GNNA Board member and District Three Measure U Commissioner. When I worked at UC D Center for Reducing Health Disparities, I was fortunate to have collaborated with Marlene Joshua's House Funder. And Marlene worked with the center and focused on innovative solutions that address cancer, health disparities with Indigenous, Latino, and homeless populations. When Joshua's House was opened in 2018, it was a wonderful partnership. A few months ago, much to my delight, Jeff presented to the city council his plan to implement several strategies to reduce homelessness in Sacramento. And presented the proposed plan to have Joshua's House off of Northgate. The proposed location on Larchwood Drive is an abandoned dirt plot. It's ugly and does nothing to improve the feeling of living in a vibrant community. The lot is in front of Garden Valley Elementary School. Some individuals expressed concern that having a homeless hospice in front of the school will send the wrong message to our children. However, they're in the minority, and that doesn't represent our community. Northgate is predominantly Latino-Chicano-Latino Catholic community. Culturally and spiritually, we are taught to care for those in need. Taking care of loved ones and others is a sense of honor and commitment. My grandmother, while poor, had a golden heart and would often tell me, hijita, siempre hay que ayudar a la gente. Little one, we must always help others. She instilled this in me, and to this day I live by this. If we in Northgate have an opportunity to be prominent and show Sacramento that what the best of humanity looks like, I urge all of you to vote and approve the opening of Joshua's House off of Northgate. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And our last speaker is David. David is our 59th and last speaker.
Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. David Ingram. I own a property on W Street. Katie and her office are very familiar with me and the plight that we've endured here on W Street next to Poverty Ridge in the Newton Booth neighborhoods. On April 9th of this year, Friday, I remember it very well. I was on my way to the office, and I turned on a 22nd Street to make the loop. And I saw that they, they were finally clearing that section of the freeway for the construction for the Fix 50 project. And the last big ring of homelessness that we were dealing with was being removed. I wandered over, talked to the workers. The first thing I noticed was a five-gallon bucket full of used syringe needles. This is the infamous picture that has made its rounds on Nextdoor. I came back to the office. I was pretty excited that this, this blight and this problem, this nuisance, this, the crime, the defecation, the needles, the waste, the theft was going to be moving away from us. And within an hour, I got an email from a friend of mine with the Task Force Homeless Plan that showed all these sites under the WX freeway as future homeless sites. And I immediately started a correspondence with Katie Valenzuela in her office. I was assured that this was going to be a fair, equitable result, that other districts were going to participate in the process. Look at the map, this final map that everyone, that's going to be binding on us all. Five huge lots directly across the street from us under the WX freeway. This is not fair. This is not equitable. We all want to help the homeless people. But for everyone complaining about their neighborhoods, look at the map. Five huge lots under the WX freeway. And that's, there's another site that's about to open at 28th and X, which is only five blocks, six blocks away from that. So we've got six.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Katie and Jay, do what's right and pare this down for us before the vote tonight, please. This is not fair.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Well, thank you very much. Fifty-nine callers, really important to hear from the members of the public. And again, that's in addition to the dozens of community meetings that my colleagues have, have led over the last seven months. Let's turn it over to the city council now for comment and, and hopefully a motion and a second at some point. Who, is every, I assume everybody wants to speak on this. We can go, well, why don't we go the other direction? Let's start with District Eight.
You have Councilmember Gara and then Valenzuela punched up to speak.
Okay, well, again, I, that's fine. Okay, why don't we go? Councilmember Gara, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank all the callers here who called in today, and also all of our city staff who've, who've taken a lot of hours to put this together and taking the calls in from our constituents too. I do appreciate all of that work. I have a lot of thank yous here because this was for our district, a lot of time for volunteers who wanted to really make an impact. And it was folks with different perspectives, very polar at times, very controversial opinions, but everyone did pull together. So, I mean, first I want to do, I want to thank Scott Clark from the South Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association, and Ian Barlow from Sierra Oaks, who, who helped in building the template for what you see in this plan for the Good Neighbor Policy. And that's the first step, as Vice Mayor Chenier discussed, before anything goes. And tonight, I think of the big message that I want to continue to convey is that it's just step one of all of the continued engagement that we need to have as we move forward. And there's more, more that we can benefit by that consistent engagement. But that's the important part that we want to start with. Second, you know, for those in my district, you know, our task force members who came from the PBIDs, Erica Del Meyer from the Parent Alliance, Frank Louie and Elgin Bradley, who's owned a business for 42 years on Stockton Boulevard. Their organizations identified that we had 142 active camps in just the past two months. So identifying that we have an active need to, to address the issue here and now is something that was very clear for all of us, including the challenge of making sure that we were doing and communicating in different languages. So thank you, Linda Louie and my win for both doing our workshops in Mandarin and Vietnamese. And that to engage our businesses on the corridor who needed additional language support. Our approach here with our task force required people who lived in the district and had owned businesses in the district, who had skin in the game. And that, I think, you know, brought in a very positive approach because we got views from every different neighborhood. Thank you, Kelly Burns, Manuel Ben Rostr, Faye Kennedy, also with the Poor People's Campaign. We've been working in these camps as well. And, and what it led to is a recognition that we didn't have any public land in our district to really find the solution. But that didn't stop a lot of our neighbors from actually going out and trying to find solutions. Yes, that was a barrier and a challenge, but it meant that we had to work harder to go out there and connect with property owners and landowners. So I want to thank, you know, Linda Wood from College Greens, and also Mike Jaskey, you know, from College Greens, who, who were instrumental in looking for locations. And we came out with over 22 locations because we knew that many of them might not make it through. That's how challenging it has been to find these solutions. The outcome of that also meant that we weren't going to wait for this master plan to actually start finding solutions. And so I do want to thank one of the locations, which is a safe parking and cooling center here in District Six with 70 Advantage. They were willing to step up and say, we need to do something when the weather was cold, and now when the temperature is hot, how do we move forward with this? And that involved our neighbors in the south area from being engaged. So I want to appreciate their work in, in this effort. And also to identify places where we can do work with entities like Pride Industries. I appreciate ULI's work. I want to thank their effort here. But I also think we need to acknowledge some local entities like Pride Industries, who have put together good working proposals. One of the sites in District Six would be a wraparound service, focused on workforce development, of which Pride Industries has a history with, and we already contract with the city for employment. So making sure that the sites that we look at are more than just housing, that they're leading to people addressing their needs and also their workforce needs too. So thank you, Pride Industries, and thank you also Frank Louie and Stockton Boulevard Partnership for stepping up and saying, we need to find a solution here. The fact that we didn't wait and were able to open up also through Project Home Key 55 units, as noted in the mayor's master plan here at St. John's Square. That, that's a testament of everyone pulling together, pulling all nighters to put in forms to get some funding to move forward. So thank you, Julie Heroda from St. John's, who's also part of the task force, and gave us real insight about what it takes to actually run a facility with good neighbors and making sure that you're connecting with the community around you. And that's why we had a lot of support for that program, even in the last few months. That added 55 units to this proposal here. I also want to thank Patty Uplinger, who formerly was SAC Self-Help Housing, where we do have scattered site housing already in the district and was giving us information a bit, again, about good programming. How does that, how does it impact and translate with the neighborhood? And to that point, Section 18 of this master plan, it requires the city manager to explore mobile crisis services. We know that the county has a huge role in this, but making sure that we have mobile sources. Dr. Estella Drake of UC Davis Health was part of our task force. And proposed, has a proposal here that I hope as our financing plan moves forward in conjunction with the county, we can fund a mobile source unit for substance abuse and mental health support services. Thank you, Daniel Mios from SAC State's Community Engagement Department with Health Services. They were part of our task force to bring in all of the mental health pieces so that if we do have a safe ground, a safe parking location or any location, that we are sending services if they can't be located on-site. And finally, I do want to thank also the task force members, Roberto from Mutual Housing and Stephen Dobbs from Mercy Housing, who also, the plan that we'd submitted, and we hope that as we look at the Housing Trust Fund, includes permanent supportive housing and how best we can do it. We should build more permanent supportive housing. I agree with the callers from District Two. Del Paso has some great projects. We still have some great projects on Stockton Boulevard to fund to move in that direction. And Mayor, to your point about success begins success, this conversation and the last conversations that we've had over the weekends and even our community meeting in District Six led to, to a call that we got this afternoon. And because of the success we've had with Mercy Housing in pioneering the first motel conversion here in Sacramento, great success with the boulevards on Stockton Boulevard. Everybody said it was going to destroy the neighborhood. But all of property values have increased even ever, ever since that permanent supportive housing went through. We got a call today from the, the roadway inn on Stockton Boulevard that they say they want to be part of the solution. Not only do they have rooms that they want to look at as part of this plan, but an additional half an acre parcel with their land, they'd like to be part of that solution. So, Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to do is move this item in staff report. But one, add to Tier Two of this proposal, the roadway inn on Stockton Boulevard, so that it can be vetted appropriately and looked at as a site. Two, that we direct the city manager as well to look at community, to look at creating the appropriate outreach dollars for engagement as we move forward as well. One of the key things I heard loud and clear today and even last night is that as much outreach as we did, and we've talked about it tonight, clearly, we need to do more outreach and to fund true outreach. So I'd like to make sure that that is clear, that we direct the city manager to allocate the appropriate funding for outreach and engagement with residents that are adjacent to those properties. And then finally, the third point, I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, with this motion, direct the city manager that is part of the funding plan that's coming to council for us in approval, that we create a community improvement fund for every one of those neighborhoods who has stepped up, as you heard it, to be able to address some of those issues with the community. We did it before with railroad, and then we should do it again here to support the issues of whether it's pedestrian improvements, park improvements around the area, to make it sure that there's a win-win for the community. I want to again thank all of the hours and commitment from our neighbors from across the district to submit a great proposal. And finally, the recognition that one of the biggest key issues we have is that we need more assistance for family housing. And, you know, I am proud that we are moving, that we have submitted, and we have a proposal for a property in my own neighborhood as well. I want to, I heard the comments say, you know, is there anyone in your neighborhood? Yes, there is one in our, in my neighborhood, and I'm proud that our group has worked together to try to find a good solution for more housing for families with children. There are ways to do it. We have experts here that can do it. But we have to do it with community engagement, funding for support for the community, and most importantly, that it is equitable throughout the entire district. With that, Mr. Mayor, that'll be my motion.
All right. Thank you very much. I think the motion with some of the changes is totally appropriate. I don't mind adding additional sites, not taking any off. That's the idea of the up or down vote. But adding a site is fine. More outreach, I think, is incorporated in the resolution. But to put a finer point on it, I'm fine with that as well. And the idea of a community improvement fund mitigation, I think, also implied, but to make that express. And certainly, I previewed it as I lay out our plan, a plan for our ARP investment, focusing on the neighborhoods and the commercial corridors and clean and safe, as Vice Mayor Chenier, you know, articulated two weeks ago at council, is going to be a big part of that funding plan. But all three are fine. All right. Thank you. We'll wait a second on that motion at some point. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to start just by congratulating your pro team Ashby on her site. That's really exciting. And I think one thing that I'm just in awe of is how quickly S H R A and city staff have pivoted to do these crazy new models. I think this is now the third motel conversion we've done in the city in like not a lot of time. And so clearly, this is a strategy that works, and I hope that we keep pushing ahead because that's really, really cool. So I want to start just by saying what I've said to a lot of folks before, that this is not our last step. Not just with implementation, because implementation is going to be a beast. It's going to be a lot of work. We need to keep pushing the county for partnership. We need to keep looking for additional sites, and particularly in parts of our district that are rich with resources and are rich with amenities that would really help people reintegrate. And I know that's hard because there's not a lot of vacant land hanging out in our more affluent areas that we can take advantage of. But I think if we get creative, we can really do some good there, and we really can't leave any stone unturned. And so I know I'm looking for more sites, and I hope all of my colleagues are as well, rather than taking sites off. As you said, Mayor, we really need to be adding more. We're still, we still have more work to do. We still have more need in the community. And so I hope that continues for everybody. But I also want to say that we're definitely not done particularly when it comes to housing. As a lot of callers remind us, the goal here is housing in the end, not just shelter. And next week, I want to make sure that people caught that. We are talking about our housing element next week. And this is when we are going to be putting the rubber to the road on like, how are we going to make these affordable housing targets real? How are we going to pay for it? What are the mechanisms to make sure it's integrated into developments moving forward? That is a really critical conversation, and I couldn't agree more that that is a big part of what's going to make this successful. I also really want to lift up what the SAC Housing Alliance said in terms of matching funding. I hope that part of our $100 million could be put towards the gap financing on all of these projects. We heard folks mentioning projects in Del Paso. I've got several in my district that would create hundreds of units that are just a few million away from being able to pencil and move forward. And that is a frustrating situation for them and for us, and it would be really great if some of this money could go to that. And if moving forward, as we identify resources, we're thoughtful about how are we matching the money we're putting into sheltering with money for the housing that we know folks are going to need to get out of that shelter and on with their lives. So my goal here is that we don't stop until we have an option for everyone. Folks with partners, folks with dogs, folks who can't have roommates, folks who can't work, folks who need services, that we're done when we don't need warming or cooling or clean air centers because everybody's got a home that they can be in, that they can be safe. And so that for me is the end goal. But in the meantime, we know that this housing is going to take years, and we really need to stabilize folks now. I do not like getting calls from folks like Michael who called in here tonight, where we do as much as we can to help them, but it always stops short of being able to get to the root cause of the issues they're experiencing because we don't have any place for folks to go. We don't have any place for that encampment to go to. And in the end, we're all frustrated. He's frustrated. I'm frustrated. Half of my constituents are frustrated because in the end, I keep hitting this wall of there's just no place for folks to go. And what are we going to do in lieu of having those spaces? So I'm really excited that this plan is coming forward tonight because what is happening on our streets is absolutely not okay. And I'm really proud of the engagement in District Four. I mean, we attended dozens of community meetings and neighbor association meetings and P-Bid meetings and. And had thousands, literally, I searched it the other day, thousands of emails and phone calls and. And one-on-ones with constituents who were asking questions, especially after our council presentation in April. When WX first came up to say, wait a minute, what does this mean? Folks like David, how is this going to work? And I'm really happy. I mean, District Four has already has dozens of sites for services and shelter and we have the first city sanctioned camping and parking sites. And now we are hopefully after tonight, going to have the most beautiful tiny home community that you have ever seen. Thanks to this amazing design that was presented at the beginning of our meeting. And I really think that we are creating some models here that are going to be amazing. And I know it's a leap of faith when all you see is what you see right now on the streets. It's hard to imagine folks coming into your community. And that working out well, but it can work well. It has to work well because that is the only path forward for all of us. And just like Councilmember Gara said, I have unhoused folks all over my community. I have folks who camp in the alley behind my home right here. And I take pride in doing what I can to support them and what they're doing to try to support themselves because they're my neighbors. And this is a part of all of us moving forward is giving people voice to be. So a lot of questions folks have asked me, I just want to flag that we have talked about with staff and how are landlords going to accept these vouchers? What's the capacity of hotels to take on more folks? How do we get to these numbers for occupancy and turnover? And I have to say that I'm really confident that these numbers are attainable. They're going to be hard. They're not going to come easily. It's going to require big pushing. It's going to require all of us pushing in the same direction. But all of these conversations we've had with experts, with the consultants, with the mayor's team, with all of the staff that have worked on this, I really do think this is doable. These are doable numbers. I didn't believe it when I first saw the plan. I'm like, there's no way we're going to get to these numbers on some of this, but I understand the logic here and I really do think we can get there. So I am saying that we have a ton of work to do tonight. And so my vote tonight isn't just to support this plan. It's also committing myself. To keep doing that work both on the housing front and on the sheltering front. So I would like to propose before I second Councilmember Gara's motion, I want to propose one friendly amendment if he's open to it. First, I think some of our callers tonight made a really good point that the folks that we want to benefit from these shelters and services really need to have a voice in the creation. And so I'm wondering if we can do a friendly amendment that good neighbor policies really engage the folks we hope will serve, be served in those encampments. In the process of designing those policies and designing the services. It's just good practice and and I think it would be good to enshrine that in our motion tonight if you're open to it.
I would be glad to welcome that. In fact, we did have members of the unhoused community as part of our task force and and gave us real input about the struggles that they were having. And how we could actually move things faster. So yes.
Absolutely. Yeah, we were really lucky to work with Joe Smith to get contact with the few folks as well who are just incredible torn as seven. They did an amazing job of helping us understand and inform our work. Thank you. So with that, I'm happy to second your motion, Councilmember Gara. And then finally, I just want to add before we move on, because I know the next step after this is the funding plan. And I mentioned the affordable housing piece that I hope will be a part of the funding plan and the overall formula. But at the end of our two o'clock meeting today, I heard twice people say that it's okay if DCR has to drop. The alternative to nine-one-one response work in order to do the master plan implementation work. And I just want to say that I think with a hundred million dollars on the table, that that we don't need to make that choice, that my community really wants both. That to the degree to which we can use these resources to ensure DCR is adequately staffed. To do both would be incredible because I don't want us to lose momentum on really important conversations that we had as early as today. To make sure that that stays forward. So that's something I'm going to be looking for in the funding plan as we move forward and just wanted to flag that at this stage. But thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who worked really hard on this team. Thank you to our task force. This does feel like a really scary moment for a lot of people, but I really do believe that we're on the right track here. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. Councilmember Harris.
Mayor Jay Chenier, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got, I didn't have the order. Vice Mayor Chenier, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jeff. I'm good. I'll wait.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jay. Look, I'm pretty excited about this plan. For years, we have been looking for alternatives to create better outcomes for the unhoused population. And we've done a little bit of hunt and peck. We started with railroad shelter. Kind of got our toes in the water, learned a lot, made some mistakes, moved on to Capital Hotel, Capital Park Hotel. You know, as we've gone along, we've gotten better and better. Now we have two sprung tenant shelters. You know, this city is showing its commitment to try to get to real solutions to deal with homelessness. There, there are so many nuances to this problem that it's no wonder that each of us council members tonight got a little love. And a little bit of heat from our constituents. There's a lot of passion around these issues. There's a lot of opinions. But the fact of the matter is, one caller called in and said exactly the right thing. We have resources like never before. And we, this is our chance. This is our shot to make a serious dent in this problem. And there are many aspects to it, from affordable housing to shelter, tiny homes. There's many ways to get there. And different programs will work better in different sites. We have to be mindful of that. I'd have to say that as we move into the implementation of this. I just have to thank our city staff from the city manager's office, all the way down to code and public works to DCR. This is going to be a heavy lift and our staff is extremely capable. They, we're asking them to do something extraordinary. But I believe they're up to the task as long as the will of the council is unwavering and stands behind them. We know as we move forward that our most urgent need is for safe campgrounds and safe parking areas. We have needs for housing. There are a lot of great proposals in this plan, a lot of really good stuff. But you know, it's going to take a while to implement a lot of the housing pieces. I hope that we can keep our eye on the possibility. Of creating some shorter term interim housing possibilities for people because from my point of view. People who are living unsheltered on the streets really need safety. It was mentioned today that, you know, a drug cartel is extracting rent from the homeless to live on Roseville Road. According to the council member in that district, there's truth to that. These kinds of things, really bad things do happen outdoors and and safety is really a primary concern. The flip side of that is the more people we bring into a stable situation, the more we can clean up our city. Mr. Mayor, we talked about this in a previous meeting, but in the funding piece, I will certainly be looking for a pretty robust. Amount of money to do cleanup in our city because our current funds are clean contract is not nearly enough. So we'll be looking for that. And then you mentioned, Mayor, the campus model is something I believe in. I know that we're working towards that and I really appreciate the effort. And I think that it can have great efficacy as well as all these other opportunities. You know, we're kind of pulling all the plugs out and we're going for everything. Because we know that these models work. We know that motels work. We know, we've tried these models. They're tried and true. It's not one size fits all. And yes, there are some people who are going to be very resistant to coming in and resistant to services. And we will deal with that as appropriate. We've found for a long time and SAC Steps Forward will tell you that it takes generally about ten touches. For really service, service resistant people to start to get to the point where that spark is ignited in them. And they want to make a turn in their lives. We just need to be there at the right time and capture that moment for them. And with this many programs in place, I believe that we can get there and really hit the right timing for everybody in their path. You know, as they move from homelessness to a more productive life. But there is a piece that doesn't get discussed much and it's drug addiction and it afflicts a tremendous number of people living outdoors. You know, that's why we started the Shore Center. I hope to grow it and get another location. And work with the county in a very concerted way to deal with these mental health issues and addiction issues. Because that work is going to be incredibly important to really creating root solutions to the homelessness issue. That's about all I have to say, Mayor. I'm really glad to vote for this. I'm ready to get started. And I want, I want to build some of these, some of these sites as soon as possible. And show our constituents of the city that we mean business this time.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Vice Mayor Jay.
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor. So I, I'm going to support this. I think it's the right thing to do. It's, it's a bold step. Katie said this a little bit differently, but this is a pretty large leap of pace. And delegating a lot of authority to the city manager. Who I know can handle this and it's going to help us a lot and move us faster along the way. What, what I think, and I talked a little bit about this this afternoon. The implementation part is going to be incredibly difficult. This is no easy lift and at this point, we don't really have capacity in the city to do all of this. As quickly as anyone would want, but we just got to get going and start moving. What I would like to see and not for, not to come back for a council vote, but. Howard, I'm assuming that as you come back with the implementation plan. It will include criteria for decision-making about sequencing, right? So what do we do first? And what are the factors that go into that? For me, obviously budget is going to be important. The readiness of the site is going to be important. You know, how many units were, whatever we're calling them, you know, how many units we're going to get from doing it? So what's the bang for the buck that we get there? But the one thing we haven't talked enough about tonight, and a lot of our callers didn't talk about it, is the issue of equity. And equity comes in a lot of different ways. But where I'm talking about is equity among the eight districts. So I would hope and would like to, you know, make sure that our city manager in developing. Whatever rubrics they're going to use to see how we move forward on this and what the implementation plan looks like. Uses, uses equity as an important tool. And I, and I just want to highlight it as an example. And again, I'm supporting this. I think we need to do it all. But how we do it and how quickly we do it in various places is important. So if you look at, and this is under D four, which is all the Caltrans properties underneath the freeway. If you look at those in the plan, it's four hundred folks that exist. At the end of WX is a shelter that we're opening this month. That's another hundred. And then if you look at six through eighth, that's probably another hundred or so. So we're talking about the possibility of putting six hundred individuals underneath the freeway. Between fourth and and twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth. Is that the right thing to do? Is it going to happen? How is that going to happen? How is that going to be absorbed by the community over what period of time? I wouldn't be in favor of doing that all at once. That would be a pretty large undertaking and have a huge impact for the community. And I don't think it would be equitable to do that out of the gate with others. So I'm hoping that in that, and what comes back around implementation, that the question of equity. Is really involved in how decisions are made and how the sequencing comes out on these properties. So that is, that's what I wanted to bring up and and Howard, I'm. Love to get any kind of response if that's, I know you've given some thought, obviously, to how you're going to do an implementation plan for that.
Jay, can we, can we wait till after the vote? Because the last part of this, remember, is Howard to begin the. Report on implementation to be continued to next week.
All right. Well, if it's, if it's good with Mr. Gera, I'd like to add into the direction that equity is a consideration in the sequencing of building. Or implementing the sites.
Yeah, I'd like to put in there the, then it's be the fifth direction to direct, create the equity implementation part.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very good. And that's, that's accepted by the second or the motion, it comes from a Valenzuela.
Yes, with, with the caveat that the Southside Park site is going to shut down when construction ends. So just wanted to make sure that was a factor.
It's a broad statement of that.
Yeah.
You used it as an example. Okay. Very good. We've got Councilmember Vang, then Jennings.
Thanks, Mayor. So it's nine, nine o'clock. First, I just want to say thank you, just to Mayor, your staff, the consultant that worked on this. And just all my colleagues for their work to get to this moment. And I want to thank you, Mayor, for your leadership. I also want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all the folks who called in, whether you called in to support or oppose or provide more insight. I just want to say thank you so much just for staying engaged because that's incredibly important of how we move Sacramento forward is to make sure that we have. Diverse voices at the table so that we understand where all Sacramentoans are in this moment, even though we may have disagreements. I also want to take this opportunity to thank all the Neighborhood Association District Eight, our P-bids and all the advocates on the ground. A shout out to South SAC Heart in particular, who really helped facilitate some of our community meetings. Want to give a shout out to neighborhood leaders who helped me canvass the neighborhoods regarding District Eight sites. And just all the great work that our district leaders have done with Team Heart and Hustle to get to this moment. I think this plan is definitely a good first step to address the urgency that we have now. And the humanitarian crisis that we know is happening right now in our streets. We know that folks are living on the streets. They have a shorter lifespan. So this is a public health crisis and we have to do everything we can to address, to address this issue. I understand that this is also an up and down vote for citing. And I, I know very clearly that it doesn't address the larger failure of a larger system that leads to homelessness. Councilwoman Valenzuela had mentioned that next week on August seventeenth, we're going to be having that conversation on the housing element. And I really want to urge my colleagues that we got to double down. We have to double down on affordable housing, or we're going to end up right here again. I also want to take this moment to just say that, you know, when I had the opportunity to review the site, Mayor, when you release this plan. Is that I was disappointed that the sites weren't equally spread across the city. You know, I've heard from constituents, community members and leaders and advocates on the ground that this needs to be equitable. And the only way to ensure that is that citing plan is just all neighborhoods. I want to also take this opportunity to say to Mayor Pro Tem that I want to commend you for having a woman in, in children hotel in District One. I think that's great. You've always been a champion for women and children. But I want to state that this plan as it stands, as proposed, still lacks significant sites in wealthier neighborhoods. And I'm going to say that again, we see it clear in the plan that wealthier neighborhoods don't have sites. And that is something that as a council, we need to grapple with because we've seen over and over again, the disinvestment in. In communities that are bearing the brunt now of the pandemic. And now when we're talking about the citing plan. We see it in the neighborhoods that often have been left behind. I love my district. I love this community. I live in Metta View and I'm proud of our district. We have continued to stepped up. We have the Women Navigation Shelter. We have transitional housing for women and children through Waking the Village. We have a hotel. Housing program with S H R A on La Mancha. We've identified a site for permanent housing for veterans and families in South SAC. And ensuring that we also have a local anchor like Miss Jackie Rose. District Eight will not wait because we know it's a moral imperative. But it's also obvious that there continues to be an equitable planning services for the unhoused in low income communities. That's again, already so economically distressed and it's unacceptable. It's absolutely unacceptable. But I want to share that I am voting for this because it is an important first step. And we need to take care of our veterans and our families and our unhoused neighbors that's living on the street now. Doing nothing is not an option. And while I am upset at the distribution of site. Again, this is the first step and I'm hoping that other districts will continue to identify more, more, more sites. Secondly, I also want to share that while the plan, when I read the plan, Mayor, it did have like one or two short paragraphs on racial equity. The resolution itself and Councilmember Chenier mentioned this, the resolution itself doesn't state really our commitment to racial equity. You know, it doesn't provide, and I know this is going to be part of the implementation. It doesn't provide how we will hire or track outcomes to ensure that people who are building homes or shelter. Those who are providing services or place into permanent housing, that they're not disproportionately white, right? I think that's really important to make sure that we have a racial equity lens as we move forward. I'll give an example. My team and I were on the field this past two weeks with one of the large encampments in District Seven and District Eight. We've been working with a large encampment of Southeast Asian unhoused neighbors. And we had more elders and interpreters present to help and assist as needed. And as we move forward, we have to be very intentional about addressing language barriers, the challenges that disproportionately impact black, Latino, Southeast Asian. And indigenous communities as a result of systematic and structural racism. And so that wasn't laid out. And so that wasn't laid out in the resolution. And so that, that was something that was very concerning, but I think as we move forward, Councilmember Chenere had mentioned that in the implementation, I do want to see a commitment and what that, what that would look like as we are scaling up the 20 sites. So Mayor, I, I support this, but with the suggestions that a few of my colleagues have mentioned. So one is, you know, I, I want to see in the implementation, how we prioritize our most vulnerable populations, our veterans, our EL population. I also support Councilwoman Guerra's proposal. I don't think it was an amendment, but asking that we set aside funding for community investments in neighborhoods that have stepped up on these sites. That I think that's a commitment that we should have as a council because we know that in certain neighborhoods, those neighborhoods often left behind is bearing the brunt. We are still in the pandemic and it is important that we also commit to that. And then, you know, as we move forward on implementation, there's, the, the budget is a hundred million. I want to make sure that those dollars are also reinvested back into the community. So for section 10, I don't know, we can do it, do it for this resolution or implementation. I'd like to see some language that the city will take all necessary steps to not only secure efficient, but local minority businesses to build and install housing on identified sites. That's absolutely really important for me. And if we're going to be investing, using $100 million, those dollars need to be reinvested back into local businesses and our local organizations. The last piece that I had questions on and wanted to also maybe provide direction is there is a section on evaluation. I really appreciate that in section 20, where we do direct the city manager to agendize regular public updates, but I don't know how often that is. And Mayor, I don't know what your thoughts are on, on how often that is, but I like to request that we get a report back on progress every month to the public.
I think every month is exactly what I was thinking. And I think, well, it doesn't have to be in the reso, we'll work it out administratively with the C major, but can I make a suggestion based on your comments, Councilmember Vang? And it's just the Councilmember Geta, the maker of the motion. I think it would be appropriate to amend the motion to require a racial equity lens for every aspect of the implementation of this plan. I've heard it from Councilmember Chenere and he alluded to it as part of the, but let's just be specific about it. It's a, it's a major part of our work citywide and everything that we do. So let's just add that as a, as an overriding section. We've heard it from the advocates as well, that racial equity must be considered in every aspect of the implementation of this plan. You'd be okay with that, Councilmember Geta?
Yes, I'd be okay with the.
If I can really quickly, I, I think it's racial equity, it's geographic equity, and it's socioeconomic status.
Okay, there we go. All three, very good. That, okay, and second by Councilmember Valenzuela, you okay?
Can I make an addition as well, that we just take the word master out of plan, given some of the feedback we received tonight, and I think is important.
The word master itself? Oh, that's fine. I am sorry, yes, if that's a.
Okay, then I'm happy to.
I know the historical kind of here, right? Comprehens- why don't we substitute that, that word and add comprehensive? How about that?
Okay. Does that go in there?
I appreciate.
That's good. That's all, that's all part of the motion, Councilmember Vang now, okay?
So thanks, Mayor. And then lastly, Mayor, I just want to say just thank you to you, just for your, your leadership on this. You know, it's going to take all, all nine of us to, to get this plan moving, but want to say thank you to you and just all my colleagues who put in the hard work to get to this moment. So thank you.
I, I appreciate that acknowledgement, I really do. Thank you so much. Councilmember Jennings, then Mayor Protem Ashby, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to start off just by thanking I want to, I want to thank the mayor for his leadership. That's been done tonight, but we really appreciate your leadership on, on this comprehensive sighting plan and getting us to this point. I want to thank the 59 callers who patiently waited to share their, their point of view, their thoughts, their ideas and their opinions. And it takes a lot to wait on that phone call to get your two minutes of fame. And it goes by quickly, as a lot of people know. And then I want to also thank the community, our Neighborhood Association, the P-bids, all the volunteers who helped us to get to this point. And Mayor, I want to stop and thank the faith-based community for meeting with you and me as it relates to what they can do to be a part of this solution, of this plan. And I know that's ongoing, but they are looking for additional sites on, on, in, in their properties that can add to this plan. So, you know, somebody mentioned about bold steps. You know, this is a really bold step and I agree with that. But I thought it was a bold step that we took when we voted for the Metta View Navigation Center. And we voted for that center even though the opposition of the council member who was there at the time, who didn't feel like it was in the best interest for his community, we still voted for. We took a bold step then. I agree, we're taking bold steps now in order to move this agenda forward, to deal with the issues that we see in front of us. You know, I'm someone that has been worked in the, in the, the, the homeless or the unhoused population for many years, especially with the Winter Sanctuary Program that many of you know, my wife and I ran for, for our church. And so these are bold steps that we have to take. And I get emotional about this because now I see us putting a plan in place that is a comprehensive plan that will be able to address the many issues, not just the housing issues, but the supportive services issues that many people need in order to, to get a new start in life and get back on track. And so I'm hopeful that everything that we do in each one of these strategies is not just about housing, but it's a comprehensive strategy that will address the issues that they're dealing with, whether it's alcohol, whether it's drugs, whatever the case may be, that they're dealing with in the streets in order to be able to, to help them to get to their full potential in life. And I get passionate about this because I think we're all passionate about it. But the one thing that I just want to stop for a second and I, I want to talk to my colleagues about is this equity issue. We're in phase one right now and there's no way that we are all equal going across the board as it relates to where we are right now. But that doesn't mean that we won't reach equity by the time that this plan is over. And I would, I would just ask anyone, and I think it's for us to really understand how we can work together and thrive together. I would just say to anyone to, to come into District Seven with me and help me understand what we can do differently than what we're doing right now in order to address the issue in District Seven. Now, I think District Seven is considered one of those high rent districts. And maybe we're not carrying our load as much as people may think we're carrying it. At least that's what I read in the op ed. But I, I, I want everyone to understand what we're going through to make sure that we're doing as much as we can to reach equity in District Seven and in the city of Sacramento. And it never stops. We're going to keep working towards that until we all feel that it's an equitable distribution of services to the people who need it the most. And we may never get there, but I would encourage anyone and everyone who wants to come in and help us to understand that we've missed anything in District Seven. I invite you now to come in and take a look at the work we've done and help us to understand anything else that we need to do in order to reach equity from your viewpoint. So I just want to kind of throw that out there because I think we're moving in the right place. But I don't want us as a council to be snipping at each other because we haven't maybe gotten to where we all think we need to get to. A safe ground and scattered housing may never be considered as equitable strategies, but they are both strategies that take people off the street. So I just want to stop and stay there, but I just want to invite all my colleagues, whether it's myself or others that are considered some of the higher rent areas of Sacramento, to team up with us and help us maybe find some areas that maybe we haven't been able to see for ourselves. Let's have a fresh set of eyes that can look at this. And, and I just invite you to do that. And I know you don't have as much time as I'd like, I'd love you to have, but if you can give me any time to take a look at, you know, I'd rather us do that than write op eds without talking to each other. So this is my invitation for each one of us to talk to each other and continue to work together to make this city the city that we all want it to be. So with that, I'll stop, Mayor, and I'll turn the microphone back over to you. Mayor, I think you're on mute.
I think.
I'm sorry, I've got Mayor Protem Ashby, then Councilmember Laloie, I'm sorry.
I think it's Sean and then me.
Is it Sean first? Go ahead, Sean, then go ahead. I'm sorry. Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for leading the charge on this. I want to thank our city manager to really keeping up with the, the demands and, and the requests. I want to thank all the staff that were involved. I want to thank the code enforcement, the public works, the police department, the fire worker, the, the fire, the, the fire department. I want to thank Theresa McDonald from, McConnell from, for being involved in our community engagement. And the most important thing is that I really want to thank the residents of District Two. Simply because, you know, when you look at a district that's the most under-invested, yet they step up to the plate. If you recall initially, from our, the main conversation that we had in January, District Two had only one location available for this. And then something really big happened. And that was a wake-up call for me. And that was that as much as we push on housing, I think we're kidding ourselves. Where we go, you go to these encampments like Roseville Road. And you see that the amount of, or the number of addicts in that encampment is astronomical. Then you find out that the camp is actually more or less is being controlled by the drug dealers. Then you kind of question it even more. Then you find out that they're actually charging some of the tent owners' rent on monthly basis for them to stay there. So here, here we have this vulnerable group that is really literally getting abused and taken advantage of by the bad element, which is there are these drug dealers that, that have made this a multi-million dollar project for themselves. So that now I had to kind of take a few steps back and engage the community. And I'm very grateful to the residents to, to listen to some of the, the new sites that I had to propose, literally to, to, to save these individuals from the hardship that they're going through. So initially, I was all about, you know, our businesses and our residents, which I'm still completely for them because without them, we can't have these conversations. But now there's some major issues that is really affecting this community as well, that really we have to pay attention to. I'm very happy that we're thinking outside of box and we're not following really the models that we've seen in San Francisco or Los Angeles, which have been nothing but a complete failure. And I'm definitely supporting this comprehensive plan. As far as affordable housing, I think it's also very important for our, our public to understand that an affordable housing project takes anywhere between three to five years to get completed. As of today, affordable housing is roughly anywhere between 400 to 600,000 dollars per door. So 100 units is a $40 million project. In, in my district, we decided that we're going to create communities, not just kind of bring tents and say we're done. We want to build communities that when you drive by, you can't even tell that is a, a, a shelter or anything like that. With that, we're going to pursue a very strict good neighbor policy that I'm hoping that each district, that the council man, the council member for that district, will have major say-so into that concept. But Mr. Mayor, without having the, the rehabs and, and, and the mental illness facility in conjunction with the help of, of the county, it's going to be hard to really make this a success. But with that said, I think this plan, I, I, with your leadership and all of us working together, I think it's going to work and it's going to work fast. And, and you've known me from day one, I've been kind of, you know, this is not our work, this is county, we can't do it. But I'm, I'm, I'm believing that this plan and I'm going to engage our community even more about these, these sites that we're talking about, tiny homes or homes. These are not just going to be this little stuff. These are going to be designed. Each location will have its own bathroom, shower, kitchen. We want people to live and, and recognize that, you know, we do respect them and to bring back that self-esteem that they lost. One of my sites is exclusively dedicated to veterans. We have roughly around 600 to 700 veterans out there that are homeless. So so we're definitely going to push for that factor as well. But the one thing that everybody talks about this 100 million dollars, on paper, it sounds like a lot of money. But one thing I've come to learn in this six months, when you're dealing with projects that involves the city, 100 million comes in and goes out in, in a matter of a week or two. So we do have to be very careful. We do have to really, I'm asking the city manager, when it comes to bu- budgeting, we have to really pay attention. And I am, what, you know, the, the, the big question that I have from our city manager is that when it comes to some of these tiny homes or some of these, where there's this cargo containers, are we opening this for bits from everybody or are we isolating it to, you know, a few vendors out there?
Well, so when it comes to potentially using affordable American Rescue Plan dollars, there has to be a procurement. So there's not a sole source option. So yes, we will be going out to bed.
Fantastic. And I think this is, this 100 million dollars, we have to literally negotiate and fight for every penny to make sure all these sites get enough money and resources to have it built out. And I know that the mayor has always assured us, you guys go out there, we'll find the money. And, and I'm hoping that there's also a system that said that once these sites are up and running, that for continuous years to come, there's, there's that funding that's going to come in, into the system so we can take care of these facilities. Again, I want to thank everyone from D two, all, all the residents at D two. I want to thank all my colleagues for actually taking some action. But we have taken this bold decision. Now it's time to kind of clear the road and let our city manager, Mayor, and us kind of do our job and get these individuals indoor. That's where they need to be. There's no option. You, they have to come inside. Otherwise, we're going to have more individuals that we're going to find out extremely ill or died because of our lack of enforcement of what's good for these individuals when they cannot make decisions on their own. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I'm definitely a yes on, on this plan.
Thank you for your good work. Thank you so much, Councilmember Laloie. All right, Mayor Protem Ashby, I'm going to make a quick closing comment and let's vote.
Hey, Mayor, I already spoke at length about my project, so I definitely don't need to recap that. But on the overarching plan, I don't, I, I don't know, I'm so tired. Normally I can hang with the long meetings, but my kids move back to school and so these, you know, start at 5:30 in the morning, go into the night. I'm sorry, I'm trying to track it all. I think I agree with the amendments made to the council member's motion. I think they all sound, sound fine and relevant. I have just really two concerns, but neither one need to be a. Uh, I have just really two concerns, but neither one need to be addressed in here. I just want to say them out loud so that they're, they're front of mind to us. My first concern is just staff, that our staff have enough time and resources. And I don't really mean money, I mean personnel to do all this work. And I know Howard's bringing us back information next week, right, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just want to be clear to Howard and Michelle and Bridget and anybody else who's asked to be involved in this, that I hope next week you'll, you'll be really clear with us. I know you're hearing us say how much we all want it, but be really clear with us about what resources you have and don't have, and where you need some help. Because what I don't want to do is create expectations out there that we have no ability to meet because we don't have the staffing to get out there. So, um, let's just make sure we give you what, what you need and not forget that, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic too. And I know that that's affecting a lot of our staff. And so let us know how, how that impacts what you're trying to do. And then the second piece I'm worried about is funding, but not that we're going to run out, Mayor. You've done a great job with that, more just making sure that, I, I know we're tapping into eleven million dollars from your set aside. I just want to make sure that some of the other projects that you sort of have in your mind hanging out there, Mayor, particularly ones that you and Councilmember Harris have been working really hard on, that we have the funding when, when those arise too. So if we get the larger site and you guys really get to move forward with that vision, that we have the funding to do that. I just want to keep watchful eye on it, but I don't think we, I don't think we hold anything up. I think we keep moving forward, but at the same time, make sure we, we, we offset funds for that and, uh, and that we're just, you know, like I always tell you, Mayor, doggedly persistent about what we want to achieve here, but, you know, flexible about how we get there, which, which process is best. Um, uh, my commitment to you, and I made this promise to you, Mayor, privately, and I'll make it to you again publicly today, is that I will push as hard as I can on this project in my district and try to fund it without stepping on any resources so that you all have more resources to split across more projects and that we can do more good for more people. And, uh, I will obviously be supporting the motion tonight. And then to all the people that called in with concerns and/or support, thanks for hanging in there with us. This is a first vote, not a last vote, just stay engaged, stay engaged. Thanks, Mayor, good work.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem, thank you to all my colleagues, really, um, all very thoughtful comments, the amendments are sound, you know, uh, like I said, this is a unique kind of a resolution, the way this was written, um, and you helped improve it. I really appreciate it. Um, I just want to make a couple of closing comments. I think one of the concerns when you sum it up is that, I'll put it this way, that the city cannot do this alone and that a siting plan, e- a shelter plan, uh, is not enough. A- and I agree with that. And maybe one of the problems with having multiple jurisdictions involved in this is that we can't always sequence things perfectly. So I want to reiterate again that, um, the county of Sacramento has been great. They have been great, and they have, uh, through their community survey, through Deloitte, have, ha- have heard from their constituents, and they say the same thing, that this homeless problem is their number one concern. I know our, uh, Howard, our city manager, Howard Chenon and Edwards, the, the county executive have formed a really strong relationship. They talk all the time, it's very positive. In addition, the two by two, uh, has been meeting frequently. Uh, myself, Vice Mayor Chenier, uh, supervisors Desmond and Kennedy. And our meetings are action-oriented and moving towards specific action. And so, um, I think when, when our partnership comes together, people will see even, even how much more powerful our ac- uh, how much more important and powerful our action, the action we're taking that really is, because it'll be combined with, um, w- with our partnership. Because the truth of the matter is, you said this a lot, the city can fund and operate sites. We don't do mental health and substance abuse, that's not what we do, we can do a little of that. And so the power of this is going to be the citing, the money, the mental health and substance abuse services, and the comprehensive approach, not to warehouse people in temporary shelter, God forbid, that's not what we're about. We want to help people out of homelessness into a better life. And I agree with everybody, believe me. Again, another one of my initiatives as your mayor was to bring forward this idea of an affordable housing trust fund and to fund it with Measure U. Of course, we need more affordable housing, but Sean Laloie is correct. The price points for permanent housing is expensive. And if you look at this plan, there is a significant amount of permanent housing. And maybe that permanent housing could be had for some of our most vulnerable populations through manufactured housing, through tiny homes, through innovative housing. That can be permanent housing too for many people because we're going to need that kind of innovation if we're going to meet the demand and the need. I'm really proud of our city tonight. I'm really proud that, um, we have listened, but that we're also willing to make a big and bold step and combine with the other pieces that will be coming in the weeks ahead. We will move the needle and we will help thousands of people along the way. This is first and foremost a humanitarian issue. This is about people who all have histories, have all had families, they once had childhoods, they once had better lives. It's about our common humanity, and it is also about the condition of our city. There is nothing inconsistent with leading with a big heart and at the same time saying we want our city to be healthier, safer and cleaner. We, we can have both, and that's the path we are choosing here tonight. Let us call the roll on the motion.
Mayor, before you call for the vote, I'd like to make a quick comment, I need some clarification. So, uh, first comment is that I was going to defer a lot of the things that, uh, I was going to share as an update for when we come back, uh, with the implementation plan. Hearing, a lot has been said tonight, both from the council and from the community. It's, uh, become very clear to me that I will not be back next week. We'll be back in two weeks' time with an implementation plan, uh, to incorporate the, the request that was made tonight by the council members. Uh, I do have several clarifications that I would like to make. So coming into tonight, the goal was to prioritize those sites that we have site control over. And even within those sites, we incorporate Caltrans, uh, and RT. Those are going to be backloaded because those two, the last two, RT and Caltrans, will require additional approvals. So we're going to look at first and foremost those sites we completely control. That, that's one. The, um, the other is the use of these sites. Uh, I just want to be real clear, the, the use of those sites are going to be dictated by those council members who brought those sites forward. Uh, and then the third one, the most important one I've heard tonight is that this is a, uh, an up and down vote. We should move forward and implement, but I also heard that we want to have community outreach. So, you, you know, I just want, I want to be clear about that.
I'm going to clarify for you. You did hear a lot of public comment, we listened to the public. But you also heard every council member say they want to move quickly, and the resolution is with governance. This is a statement of law. So the fact that some members of the public felt that there was not enough community outreach, we hear it. But you've heard loud and clear, and the resolution says it, no delay. If it takes two weeks, I respect that. But really, nothing I heard tonight changes the import or the intent of what brought us here in the first place, really. And I, 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 I know we, you can hear different strands of things, but none of the amendments made to the resolution change in any way the importance of this. We added an equity lens, um, w- we added a, a, a emphasis on, on outreach. Um, all of it consistent with the resolution itself. The public comments are, the public comments are the public comments. But, but this is intended to be self-executing. And i- if the members are unhappy with any particular decision that you make, this is a statement in co- uh, this is a statement of confidence in you, Mr. City Manager. If the council members are unhappy with any of the decisions you make, they can come back and agendize any particular, particular decision, and we can always vote to override. But the presumption is going to be that you and the city team implement what is contained within here. Because I got to tell you something, and I'm really serious about this. If we get into this back and forth business about the interpretation of this resolution or the need for more process and all this business, I'm going to tell you, this thing is going to die of inertia. It will, I've seen it a thousand times before.
That's why I'm trying to get, Mr. Mayor, that's why I'm trying to get clarification.
I, and, and I'm, I'm just telling you, I, I'm sorry, it's late at night. There is no, nothing that was said tonight from the city council, nor anything that is in this resolution that implies a slowdown or a delay. I don't know why we can't come back next week and begin identifying the, 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 the plan, just as we had planned. Because there does not need to be more time here.
Mayor, this is, I think this was, that, that Howard, that already came from the council.
The council member added to the resolution, uh, amended the resolution to include community outreach.
Who said that? Where, where, what, what part is that?
Where, where's the Councilman Gara and then, um, uh, Councilmember, Member Vang as well.
That, can I say something really quickly, Howard? What we did with Broadway, for example, is we were moving forward with Broadway. We continued to do community outreach to work together to make it better. And my hope would be, in my district with the sites that I have, that I will continue to do community outreach, not with a, are we going to do this or not with this property? But how do we work together to make it successful?
That's, I just want to make sure that is the case, Vice Mayor, because.
That is the case.
That is the case. And, and, Mr. Mr. Mayor, and the, the point of funding community outreach was because if we're going to, uh, execute and build a good neighbor policy, policies for each one of those sites, we need to be able to have the staff resources to be able to do that. That was my point in there.
I understand, I'm going to tell you something else. I'm, as your mayor, Mr. City Manager, I am going to have your back every single time you make a decision to actually, uh, start something, build something up, every single time. I'm sorry, I will, and I will be really upset if this thing lingers because of some implication that we have to do more processing. Jay's exactly right. We can meet with the commu- we can work with the community as, 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 as we are, a- as, as, as we are going forward. But I'm telling you, this is an emergency, people, it's an emergency.
I have, I have one last point, then, then you can have the vote coming forward. The, the sites, when we talk about equity, it's really important for me to understand what that means because I am prioritizing the city sites that we have control over. Those are not evenly distributed across the city. So, so I think it was, uh, Vice Mayor who brought that up, and there's a couple of other council members. Uh, that's my plan to come back with an implementation schedule that prioritizes those that we have site control over. Uh, and, and regardless of whether it's evenly distributed or not, those are going to come first. Because if we wait to do, uh, an even distribution across the city, there will be a delay.
I, I think that's a very fair point, and I don't interpret the amendment. I, I think the, the amendment was to make sure for the overall plan that we consider racial geographic equity, that's, and that's appropriate. But get started. Get started with the sites we have control over, end of story. We have to get going. Please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye, yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gera?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, thank you all very, very much, that's nine, nothing, unanimous. Great work, everybody. We'll work this out. All right, Mr. City Manager, do you want to add anything? I know we did have, uh, we, maybe we took care of at least, uh, the beginning of implementing.
I think we took care of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll talk either, you know, to agendize for next week or the week after, um, you know, more complete implementation plan, all right?
Okay, will do.
Thank you very, very much. Um, is there public testimony on items not on the agenda?
This is a special meeting, so there is not public testimony from items not on the agenda.
All right, members, if there's nothing else to come before, uh, the city council, great day's work. Appreciate you all, appreciate the public, love our city. Let's go, thank you very much, we're adjourned.